Good morning, welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. It is 9:06 a.m. My name is Ty Mentor, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioners Klaus and Mihia on Zoom. Republic Virtual attendance may follow along on our Thurston County YouTube channel. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings as well, and the primary task is to review the Board of County Commissioners' Draft Agenda for this afternoon, a second review, and then we have a few other items to cover. So pull up our draft agenda for this afternoon. The meeting will begin at 2:00 p.m. We will have Pledge of Allegiance, and do we have a leader for that?
Yes, today will be District 2.
That's right, we're going in number...
Number two, Rachel.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Showtime.
All right. Land Acknowledgement, Approval of Agenda, and then number two is Presentation, which is a proclamation regarding commitment to building a courthouse and community trust. Probably touch on that.
Yeah, and in fact, we have not only a proclamation that all the stakeholders have seen, the commissioners have seen, everyone has provided input, we made some adjustments, want to thank Josh for working that through based on Commissioner Klaus's addition of a couple of words that was weaved in. We also have a press release that will be ready to be sent out as soon as the meeting is over, and then we have a number of stakeholders that will be present to make comments, because they're very excited about this direction. Appreciative of the Board's leadership, and one of those that... Josh, any additional thoughts?
No, I appreciate that, thank you. So we have like the county manager said, a news release, we have quotes from four of the five commissioners, as well as the other stakeholders, who reached out to the fifth commissioner to see if she wanted to provide comments, but we'll have that sewed up by 10 o'clock this morning, either way.
Questions for Josh or County Manager? Okay, then we'll have public comment, County Manager update.
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, Consent Agenda is lengthy. We'll go with 5A, Proclamation for Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
Yes, this is a... Good morning, Commissioners Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. This is a proclamation that was included on the draft schedule that we reviewed last week, so we will include these ones for January as consent items, and distribute them for signatures today.
Questions there? Similarly, we have a Martin Luther King Day proclamation.
Yeah, same for this one.
Hearing nothing there, we'll go to Item C, Interlocal Agreement for 2025 Energized Thurston Heat Pump Group Purchase Campaign.
Rebecca Harvey, Climate mitigation, Senior Program Manager. We spoke about this last week. This is the interlocal agreement that sets the framework for regionally coordinated implementation of the Energized Thurston Heat Pump Group Purchase Campaign. This is following the... or one of the layers in setting up this program. We have the RFP out now to select the installers. Next meeting in February, I'll bring Contract with Habitat for Humanity to serve as the low and moderate income administrator for the grant funding to provide subsidized installations. But what we have before us today is the interlocal agreement that sets the overarching framework for coordinating with our partners on the campaign. It's between the county and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and Tenino. And as you know, Thurston County is serving as the lead jurisdiction in doing the contracting with the installers for the overall program. And so the ILA set, you know, defines what the roles of each of the partners are, and it has a budget, which is the administrative budget of forty-seven thousand, not to exceed forty-seven thousand, which will be shared among four jurisdictions for per-partner cost of not to exceed eleven thousand seven fifty, and this will come out of the existing budget for climate mitigation. Pretty straightforward, I think. We didn't have a lot of questions last time, so I'll take any of you have any at this point. Thank you.
Would the... I'm just curious on the like, the RFP for installers, is there going to be like, are you shooting for five, or is it just whoever comes through the door and has certain qualifications, or is it how to...
We actually closed the RFP on January 10th, and we had ten submittals. We're evaluating them this week. We have six finalists that we're interviewing at the end of this week. So yeah, four or five is probably what we're aiming for, but we've asked them each to provide an estimate of their capacity for heat pump installs and heat pump water heater installs. And it looks like, based on the finalists that we have, we could probably, like three to four would probably be sufficient, but you know, we do want to support more local businesses. So we're just going to see how the interviews go, how it all shakes out, but it'll be somewhere between four, three and six, somewhere between those.
Other questions for Rebecca? No, thank you.
Great job, Rebecca.
Thank you.
All right, so this is Item C. We'll go to D, Active Shooter Incident Management Basic Train the Trainer Course.
Yeah, we have Ben here who's making his way through the table. Good morning, Ben. Glad to have you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Miller, Todd, Director of Emergency Services. As we discussed this last session, we're looking to do active shooter training throughout Region 3. This is 100% grant funded through SHSP, or State Homeland Security Grant Program, and with that, this is, this is going to be not only a partner initiative for law enforcement, EMS, and fire within Thurston County, but also great for the region as a whole. Just a quick reminder, we're the lead administrative agency for the region, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Nope, sounds good.
All right, moving right on to the next.
All right, let me just announce it. It's Item E, Contract for Homeland Security Grant Program.
Absolutely. So just a quick reminder on this one, this is backdated just because of the administrative components associated with the state. The state received the grant funding from the federal government on September 1st, so it's very difficult to have a contract executed and signed by that date. With that, this spans the federal fiscal year going forward from September out to... I apologize, I shouldn't have started down that path without the dates in front of me. September 1st through August 31st, 2027. So with that, we're looking to have $250,000 associated with homeland security grant funds that are passed through from the federal government. So again, these are unapproval for grant funds. My apologies for that.
Christopher, Ben, on that item E. Move on to F, which is also you, Vehicle Repair Facility Intergovernmental Agreement for Medic Unit Service and Maintenance.
Absolutely. We're lucky to have in this county a vehicle repair facility for emergency vehicles. The city of Olympia runs that facility, as well as being supported through Lacey and Medic One. And with that initiative, we have a longstanding contract with the vehicle repair facility, or the VRF, to support the maintenance, routine maintenance and emergency remaintenance of our medic units throughout Thurston County. We're looking to continue to support that moving forward. I did point out last time, I do want to remind you again that they've changed the funding model just slightly, and so they're changing it into an enterprise fund at the city of Olympia. That just means there's going to be rates that are dictated within the contract for the hours of service that they provide. With that, this is incorporated within Medic One's biennial budget in the sustainable and the 10-year plan. If you have any questions, let me know.
Hearing your questions.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item is Item G, Resolution to Adopt New Position Chief Deputy Coroner and Reclassify Position Deputy Coroner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Ponte, HR Director, and I'm here today to present a request from the coroner's office to create a new classification of Chief Deputy Coroner. They are not asking for a new FTE, instead they would reclassify current FTE. And the purpose of this position is to help the coroner with the administration and management of the office. But one of the critical components this position will lead is the accreditation of the office, and that's important because it allows a county to receive 40% reimbursement for autopsy expenditures. This does come from the general fund, and the difference at the top of the range is 4,027 a month. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
I have no questions.
No.
Coffee mishap at the table.
We're getting it.
Okay. So this is new item, is that right?
It was...
I think you were...
Yeah, we reviewed it at the last agenda review, and we've talked about it a couple times over the last year.
Over the budget cycle, it was, we discussed this option.
This is an opportunity for the coroner's team to get that added function, which will also help them with bringing in revenue. The absence of accreditation could jeopardize their ability to go after different types of revenue in the autopsy, in the work they do in the autopsies. But it also, I just want to give him kudos for being flexible. They're not asking for a new position, they're taking and reclassifying, so that's a real partnership between HR...
Initially, they were wanting, and this was kind of a compromise that we helped them come to, where they get their needs met, and it doesn't ding our budget.
Yeah, and it also gives the coroner's office the needed administrative flexibility. Right now, with only one administrator effectively as the coroner, there's, it's hard to delegate other responsibilities, and so really puts the coroner in a place where he's on call all the time. This will allow them to diversify that leadership component, provide some flexibility operationally in their office. I think the big thing for us is we want them to stay competitive going after different revenue sources, and so that accreditation is important.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you.
Item H, Renewal of Microsoft Support Agreement for Technical Assistance, IT.
Good morning. Sherry Hill, IT Director. I might have four requests on this agenda for, they're all for current service extension, and they are included in our budget and funded by rates charged appropriately to the offices and departments. The first one is, I'm seeking authorization to renew our Microsoft Unified Support Services contract in the amount of $84,635.83 plus tax. We use Microsoft Support Services and IT to assist with the implementation of new technologies, to troubleshoot complex Microsoft issues, and remain proactive regarding upcoming changes and security patching. Microsoft is the only vendor that provides this level of support for Microsoft products upon which we rely. In addition, the service comes with an extensive training catalog available to IT throughout the county. This amount has been budgeted in our 2025 budget and is in our IT rates.
Questions on H? Nope, go right ahead.
Okay, the next one, I'm seeking authorization to renew the Just Appraised software in the amount of $54,474 plus tax. The assessor's office uses Just Appraised to assist in review and audit of documents recorded with the auditor's office. They've been using this for a couple of years.
Questions on Just Appraised? What is that?
Okay, number three. I am seeking authorization to renew our virtual, virtualized server licensing. This is a five-year renewal for a total of $300,412 plus tax. The cost is $54,720 per year. Thurston County currently has over 200 servers that are the foundation of our IT infrastructure. These servers are dependent on this technology to function.
Questions on Item J? Nope. Then Item K, is renewal an upgrade for Rapid 7 intrusion detection and response?
Yes, I'm seeking authorization to renew and extend our Rapid 7 licensing. This is our information, oh, intrusion, sorry, intrusion detection and response software. The extended functionality was approved during our budget cycle, and the total cost is now $78,878.12 plus tax. This software is a vital piece of our cybersecurity. It allows our team to, our security team, to quickly identify and troubleshoot security issues as soon as they become known. All right.
Chair, before Sherry leaves, just wanted to take this opportunity to mention, towards the end of 2024 calendar, we were working at bringing the board back and overview all the different things IT is working on, projects. We haven't forgotten about that. In fact, we just had a meeting last week where we're talking that through, and so we look forward to the next several weeks to presenting that. It's going to be a good opportunity. As we see these items, our IT department continues to work on quite a bit, and they are a small but mighty team that's making a difference in the county. I think it'd be great for you to get an overview of everything that they're currently doing from a maintenance level, and new projects that are on the horizon, so we understand what the cost of investment will be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Item L, Contract Award for Leniker Leadership Training.
Hello, Dr. Jen Freihite, Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is regarding a six-month leadership training that will include three hours a month in two cohorts to have different trainings from coaching to conflict resolution to many different topics. It will include books, workbooks, two cohorts, so our executive team and some members of our leadership team, and then professional coaching for all of them for six months. This is under the Workforce Development Grant, must be spent by June 30th of this year. And yeah, unless there are any questions.
Questions? No, thank you. Perfect. So go on to Item M, Interlocal Agreements for Specialized Recreation Services.
Tracy Villanueva, our Special Recreation Supervisor.
All right, good morning, Tracy.
And again, this is Tracy Villanueva, and I plan events for adults with developmental disabilities. And last year, we provided over 165 events and reached out to over 205 folks with developmental disabilities. It's what we're asking for, three separate interlocal agreements with the cities of Olympia, Tumwater, and Lacey. And this will be for the period of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2027. And we have different amounts from each of the cities, depending on the number of participants we have from each of the cities. So for the city of Olympia, we're asking for $13,720. The city of Lacey, we're asking $8,377. And the city of Tumwater is $2,145. And again, provide recreation and leisure activities for adults with developmental disabilities, from our Valentine's dances, bowling, bingo, lots of fun events. Any questions?
You said 45, and it says 20, 21, 25 from Tumwater. Is that, just to make sure we get through?
$2,145?
That might be a typo on our...
Get out David.
Ours says 21, 25, just to make sure that numbers square.
Okay.
We'll get that cleaned up.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Tracy? Nope, thank you so much. I'm glad we do things, I'm glad we do that. We handle that issue in that way with the cities, I think it makes a lot of sense. Item N, Request for Proposals for Public Health and Social Services.
And this will be Tom Webster, Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention.
All right, good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Webster, Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. So we've talked about this item a couple times before, but we're looking to issue some requests for proposals toward funds for our homeless services activities, affordable housing, the federal community development black, block grant program, and the Veterans' Emergency Shelter Fund. We intend to issue the RFP this Friday, January 24th, but applications due February 28th. Those applications then will be reviewed by various bodies for the homeless services and affordable housing. Those will be under the Regional Housing Council. The CDBG funds will be reviewed by the South County Mayors and County Manager, and the Veterans Funds by the Veterans Advisory Board. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm not hearing any questions, so I think we're good.
We went through most of this last week, so it's kind of a...
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Takes us to O, Set a Public Hearing to Amend Thurston County Code Chapter 207 Regarding Board of Health Membership.
Yes, this will be the public hearing that will propose taking the Board of Health from 12 members to 10 members, and having the public hearing around that.
And that is...
There is no date scheduled.
Yeah, is that how it's... It says authorize the Clerk of the Board to set date and time of hearing?
Yes, we don't have one set, but can we move forward with setting that?
And I think that the proposed date is in the AIS. We've moved this year to including that language, similar to what it calls for still bids, to allow flexibility in the public hearing date and time. We experienced a few towards the end of last year that needed to be adjusted, so we've come back and for a formal motion to rectify the reschedule of a public hearing. So this just allows us the flexibility upfront.
The reason we do this, it's because it's a way for the public to know when the public hearing is going to be on something that they're tracking. And so I just have some concerns if this is going to be something then that's going to be set by the Clerk of the Board, if then, you know, like how are we going to, in a more efficient way, get the word out? Because we're not doing it here in a public meeting where people are looking to see like, okay...
Sure, I understand. Good perspective.
We can look into some ways to still offer that flexibility and still get the date and time out to the public.
Do you know the date and time, just so we can get it on the record?
I think it's March 4th or March 21st.
And we also advertise it through all of Public Health and Social Services, social media, you know, press release, all of that, that we can, with any of our public hearings, we do that.
And that's...
As an additional.
Yeah.
But I understand the point made here.
So I mean, a compromise, I don't know, a compromise might be to say, to set a date and then say, but authorize the board, the Clerk of the Board to make an necessary adjustment or something. That, because if 90% of the time is not getting moved, then why miss the opportunity to publicize the correct date 90% of the time? Then you're only dealing with the 10% of the time that it had to be adjusted, and then you can, you may can make extra efforts to get the word out of the adjustment versus not ever telling people in the meeting. I don't know, I mean, it's just a thought.
No, I would be okay with that.
It's a very compromise, we'll do that.
Okay.
Find the date yet?
I believe it was March 18th.
Just give you a second to grab it. I think it's important for, just so we can... Give us one second. So the date is March 4th?
Okay.
We can have that changed for the agenda with the language you suggested, Chair, which I think is a great compromise.
Okay, so that'll be amended, and it'll set the date of March 4th, and authorize the Clerk to make any necessary adjustments. Any other questions on Item O? Nope, okay. P, Contract Award for Waste and Recovery, thank you.
Thank you.
Contract Award for Waste and Recovery Center Security and Fire System Replacement Project.
Karen Wies. Karen's going to sit up, we'd just like to congratulate her as our new Public Works Director.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity. Good morning, Karen Wies, Public Works Director. That's the first time I've gotten to say that officially, so. This is a contract award for the complete replacement of our fire and security alarm systems at the solid waste facilities at the Waste Recovery Center. Those systems are over 20 years old, failing and obsolete, and the contract through Everon LLC, just over $78,000 was solicited using the cooperative purchasing program through the Department of Enterprise Services. Any questions?
Any questions on Item P?
None, thank you.
Q, Right-of-Way Dedication Resolution, Delphi Road Southwest and 101st. Madam's on the line.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners, County Manager. Pollock Works owns a parcel in the intersection of Delphi Road and 101st, and it's an old pit property. We no longer use it, but what this is, what this item is doing is requesting that we dedicate, requesting approval to dedicate frontage along Delphi Road and along 101st Avenue, so that we have the necessary right of way for a future project at that intersection to install a turn lane. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z. And A, double A, our voucher list catching up the second, all basically from, as we had one, our second walk of these from the TC Connect backlog that we saw over the summer. Any questions from board members about that, any of that?
I do have a question on this. Well, I actually went through this whole list yesterday, just because I wanted to see what it is, you know, and so, I mean, really went through it. But, so if we, if we notice things on the list, what's the process for that?
Just send Summer and I an email, a question, and we can round it up.
Yeah, the only thing I noticed on all of these were that there was lists, or a couple notations around expired copy machine leases. And we paid a bunch of extra fees for expired leases because we have an updated leases, and so I just want to flag that, and I'll get that over to you.
Thank you.
Yep, that's... Once in a blue moon, there's something that, you know, is of general, you know, concern, but lots of times it's just commissioner questions and reach out to County Manager and...
Sure.
It's easy, sometimes you just have to check your staff or...
Yeah, I just didn't get to it, say, yesterday, so then I, you know, I was like, eh, I'm just gonna ask, yeah.
For a while, Gary had a standing request, anything to do with an expense that had to do with the atrium, he had flagged and pulled aside for...
That wasn't really about the expenditure, it was just about him wanting to be consistent in his voting on approving the vouchers.
Yeah.
Because he had opposed them.
So if there was anything in there on the voucher list that had to do with this, he would have pulled it out and he would want that done separately.
That's kind of a separate deal.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so let's go on to item six. So we have no business department items, this is a slightly unusual structure of this agenda. And so it'll be the lengthy consent agenda, and then straight to Commissioner Reports.
Sure, the only item I wanted to flag was the public hearing we just discussed regarding the Board of Health, scheduled for the meeting where we believe we don't have a quorum due to the National Association of Counties Conference. And so that's, you know, what we ran into last year. And so the flexibility of the language is important so that when there's a business need to do that, we can move it around and not throw all the noticing and everything off. Obviously, that's something that the clerk is going to be working through. We thank some of your aides for flagging that, as I think confirmations of travel and stuff have been in the last couple of weeks over the holidays, so we'll work that through.
Okay, well, makes sense. And then public hearing at 3:30, so we'll probably take a break, because I don't think it'll take a full hour to complete this agenda, although you never know, public comment. So at 3:30, we'd have a public hearing regarding a resolution for countywide planning policies update. Ashley's here to answer questions.
Can I just go back a minute, just ask a question? So with, I'm tracking that, you know, people will be out for the NACO conference. So is there a reason we can't adjust the time of the date, I mean, for the, for the hearing? The Board of Health hearing? Is there, like, I don't, I guess I'm not tracking what you guys are saying.
Yeah, we can't, so there's legal notice timeframe, and then we also have to get things in the paper. It's a recipe that has to be followed. So when there's a date that's set, we try to pick within the window. We can move it around.
Out, I'm out.
Out, but moving it up is sometimes a problem. We just have to make sure that we're following all the noticing requirements. In this situation, it's kind of unique in that we're having the conversation, and that date that's picked just happens to be some, something that we're wrestling through. We may not have a quorum.
Okay, got it, I missed, I needed, my brain was going...
I'm glad you're asking.
Yeah, okay, no, got it, thank you.
So we do have a public hearing this afternoon for the countywide planning policy updates. These updates include reflections in new state law regarding tribal participation at Thurston Regional Planning Council, as well as recognition of the two new UGA swap laws. We're not asking for the board to make any decisions this afternoon. The earliest time you'd even be able to take final action on this is your first meeting in February. We do expect there to be a lot of folks providing testimony. Over the weekend, we received 40-plus new comments. We are packaging those, I think we just got them to Amy here in the last 30 minutes. And so we'll be getting those over to you as soon as possible. So I'm here to answer any questions. We'll kick it off with a short presentation, just providing an overview of what the updates include, as well as what we've heard from the community through written comment for those, for those folks that aren't able to attend the public hearing, as well as some research that we've done regarding questions that have come up from the community.
Can you provide the commissioners a little background on why there is so much energy on this topic?
Yeah, so as you recall, there is a docket item, the bar holding slash salish landing proposal that is trying to use this new state law to be able to swap land out of an urban growth area in order to swap, to put land into an urban growth area. So we are referring to it as a UGA swap. Is, there's only one other county that we're aware of that has moved forward with utilizing this new state legislation. There's still a lot of work being done at the state level regarding what it means. We have been tracking all the rulemaking, but they just held their public hearing on the rulemaking January 6th. So this is really all a very current topic. And both the adoption of these new countywide planning policies, as well as any processing of that application, will be one of the first in the state.
So you're gonna hear a variety of perspectives on this topic. I was gonna ask you about the rulemaking, because I heard a little bit about that too, and I didn't know where that stood, like, what is, like, they did a public hearing, I mean, do they have a projected date of promulgating their final rules? Like, the summer or something like that? And how would that fit with our timeline for our project?
I don't know the date offhand. I do know that UGA swaps are just one piece, because the rulemaking is all of the new housing legislative updates. So if it takes longer, it might not be because of this particular piece, but all the other ones. But I know...
We can't move, we wouldn't be able, well, I get confused, because there was the, god, what am I thinking of? Where we were, we were moving forward with something, it might not even have been a land use, but like, you would think that we wouldn't be able to move forward until the rulemaking's done. But I remember a previous context where we did, we had to, we had to do just that, and like, rules were coming out in the middle of us, and we were guessing, because that's what we had to do. So I'm wondering, in this process, do, are we bound by waiting for those final rules before we would move forward? Assuming we were ready on our own end, we may have our own reasons not to be ready, but I'm just curious.
We can move forward, that the law was adopted?
We're not required to wait.
Nope, I think the rulemaking just provides clarity in terms of these two laws and how they relate to one another. Because of feedback they received, actually from Thurston County, or folks from Thurston County, they are going ahead and putting in some language, both for the 2022 and 2024 swap laws that were passed. And what we have heard from the Department of Commerce is that they do see these as two distinct areas of law.
Okay, that's, that's kind of an important clarification, right?
It's an important clarification, there are members of the community that, you know, without that clarification, or we're seeking clarification on whether the 2024 laws replaced or superseded the 2022, and the state's feedback from the Department of Commerce is that, no, they exist as two separate sets of laws. One applies to when we're updating our whole comprehensive plan update, and sort of looking at the bigger picture. And the other set of laws applies when it's an annual amendment, or we're just, we're just looking at that one small project, rather than the bigger picture. Now, the rulemaking isn't final, but that is the feedback we've gotten so far. I will say, the reason we've been following it so closely is to make sure that there were no policy updates that were proposed by the planning directors here in Thurston County that would be contradictory to what is going to be in the rulemaking.
And just out of curiosity, again, I'm just curious about this. So if, if we had a kind of important issue in our analysis that we thought would be clarified by the rulemaking that would be coming, it's within our prerogative to pause and say, let's wait and see what the actual rule is before we just guess what the rule is and make some, and then end up having a case that's not, you know, inconformant.
The board can choose to wait. I will say that there are two sets of updates. The board can also choose to move forward with the updates related to tribal participation, while still pausing to have final rulemaking on the UGA swap. So you can, you can move forward and take action on just one of those pieces, or you can move forward and take action on both, and we can continue tracking the rules, and then update the countywide planning policies when we do the broader housing update next year, which has already been calendared by Thurston Regional Planning Council. So those are, you have lots of options.
And so the rulemaking that's happening at Department of Commerce, that's ongoing right now, but they, they have, they're not having another public hearing on that, are they?
Not, not to my understanding, no.
So, so the input has been taken, and they've clarified 2024 versus 2022?
That they are two distinct sets of laws.
And so it's already been decided how that will move forward. We're just waiting for it to be put into actual law over this next session.
For the rulemaking to be complete, yeah. So that the laws exist.
So nothing, so that's the question that I was trying to clarify is backing up on Ty, what Ty was saying is that is it in our best interest to pause? I don't know that anything will change once the rulemaking is done.
Yeah, I'm not aware of this being revisited during this legislative session.
No.
So rulemaking is the only thing we're tracking at this point.
So the rules are pretty much laid out, and then they're just gonna be implemented. And so looking at what they decided in that, which is, I think, was what Ashley was saying, is that they're two distinct laws. And that's what will end up being what we need to go by, right?
Yes, and I will, I can get the dates and make sure that's part of the presentation this afternoon when we do the quick little PowerPoint, so that you do have that information ahead of receiving comment. Just our latest, latest update on the rulemaking.
Okay, yeah. Anything else on that item, public hearing? Okay, thank you, Ashley. Glad we wrapped up today's agenda. Next up on the work session agenda is advisory boards. And we had, I think, a remaining pending item regarding opioid abatement council and task force.
Right, and sure, what I will say is that task force hasn't been an assignment, official assignment that the commissioners have made, but I'm recommending that it is one, and whoever is assigned to the abatement council also be assigned to the task force. I think that's, that's a good nexus and...
They're two different things.
They're two different things, yeah.
But they...
But they, yeah, they coincide, and it would be harder, I think, for the board to have the commissioner advise this board on everything that's going on, on the opioid front, if one is working over here on the task force, and one is working over here on the abatement council. So having the same person in, having their foot in both of those conversations, I think would be the best advisement to the board.
And this is the one that we were waiting until after the first of the year to assign somebody to?
Correct, this is the one that has not been initiated, and so we are getting this decision. We're gonna be sending something out to the cities, letting them know that once they've made their decision, we can call a meeting for most likely in February and get that off and running.
Any question, or any concern about the suggestion of having the same person on the both? Makes sense to me, I guess. Okay, so then, was the issue that Commissioner Klaus and Commissioner Grant both were interested? Was that, I'm trying to remember what was...
It was the last conversation, I think it was being had before Commissioner Grant was fully on, on the board, and we did not have an update on where the abatement council was as far as its timing. So now that we've rounded both information, and Commissioner Grant has been seated, I think the board is ready to have the conversation about who should be the person appointed.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and again, you've attended some meetings from your committees and kind of have a sense of what your workload's like and all that, hopefully, was sort of the thought of like...
Sure.
So are both commissioners still interested in this appointment?
Well, I mean, I am definitely interested. I will just say that I would really like to be appointed to this, and to both of these. This is the area of expertise that, you know, I kind of bring from, from years of working in the professional realm around some of these issues, and so I'm definitely interested in it. I don't know what else.
Commissioner Klaus?
Yeah.
I think that Commissioner Grant would be great for this, and I'm more than happy to give her this, this role. And I appreciate you, Commissioner Grant, for your willingness and enthusiasm to serve. I think you're gonna do a great job.
Thanks.
Excellent, solves that problem, I think.
Yep.
I'm very, yeah, I mean, obviously, you're, with your background, you're a person, a perfect person to have representing us, so if there's concurrence on that, we'll have Commissioner Grant plan into those two items.
And I just, you know, want to make sure that Commissioner Klaus knows how grateful I am to be collaborative around this, and I'm excited, well, there'll be lots of work and lots of collaboration to go forward together, so I appreciate that.
Okay, does that, does that solve the issue point, County Manager?
Yep, so now the boards and commissions for the commissioners are all set, and people sent out a file distribution list.
Can I ask a couple questions about this?
Yes.
And this is one of the things I wrote in my update, and I wasn't sure where it belonged, but, um... So if we have, you know, now that my schedule's laid out, and there's definitely conflicting boards, like, I can't make it to both. You know, there's a couple of these on my schedule where I realize there's just, it will be impossible. And I guess that's, that's my, my question, is how do we solve that? Or is there the ability for us to wheel and deal, or change, or adjust? I just don't, I would hate to not give, for example, I'm gonna just say that Niskali River Council is at the same time each month as steady, which is the South Thurston Econo, I mean, I know that's not a council, but, you know, I'm really needed in both places as well, you know, and one is directly my constituents, so the South Thurston Economic Development is really important, and I feel like my, I'm needed there. And I don't know how I can give my full attention in Niskali River Council. I don't think it's fair that, you know, I had to send my EA in my place this last Friday, and so...
Yeah, I would, I would just say a couple items. As soon as any of the commissioners or your staff know that one of the groups changes their date and time, please let Amy know so that we can have the latest information. We try to do that, but kind of impossible for staff to keep track of all these different groups. The other thing is, when they're, when they do talk about changing their date and time, weigh in. And, but there's just so many of them that, and we meet as a commissioners, we, I mean, we're down to two days a week, but we used to meet so many times that the conflicts are almost...
Probably even worse, I would imagine. I mean, my thoughts on your question, I mean, absolute, I mean, absolute, like, if you had two assignments, we try to avoid that, but, you know, like, they're always changing, and there's so many, we're gonna miss one.
Right.
And if they're in direct conflict, then I would say we would, you know, we'd try to do a trade or figure out a way. Steady is a little tougher, right? Because it's not, no one's assigned to that.
Right.
We all just go. In fact, there was a time when no commissioner ever went to that.
Right.
And then Commissioner, you know, then Commissioner Edwards or whatever started going, I mean... And now we all kind of go, because we're just trying, you know, it's like, it's like really an individual commissioner, like, how plugged into the South County leadership, I think it's important to all of us. So I understand, you've got a huge part of your district, so that makes total sense. Like, for me, I was, I used to always go, and then State Building Code Council now conflicts quite a bit with steady. So now I'm, I'm kind of 50/50.
Right.
Where I used to be 100%, but to me, that's just kind of the way I had to work out my own priorities. But I do understand, and so...
You're alternate on that.
I'm alternate on the River Council. But of course, if we're all going to steady, then that doesn't, I mean...
There's no way to avoid the fact that you've got to have a bunch of plates, that you've got to keep them spinning all at the same time, and it's hard. And it's, you're gonna drop some sometimes, but you, you know, you do your best to utilize your EA when, but not always, probably. You know, Matt attended a meeting on my behalf last week, the Tenino Chamber of Commerce.
Sometimes, you know, I know that when things get a little tight, right? Like, if your EA sends a message, maybe one of us is not planning to attend study, or there is other things that might be able to change if you... there is other things, um, that might be able to change, uh, if you just send out an email to or your EA sends out an email to the commissioner saying, can someone attend Nisqually River Council because I, you know, I really have to attend study this time because of, you know, and I'm sure that, you know, one of us will pick it up if available. Um, and if not, then at least you'll know, like, okay, um, that's one of the things I know, uh, we've done with the military one where, um, when the primary or the alternate wasn't available, they would send out a message and I had to step in for that one a couple of times. So.
I also think, based on, uh, uh, some thoughts that Commissioner Fornier has about how we continue to, as a team strategize, it'd be good at our monthly planning sessions to have a time where we talk about boards and commissions, where they're headed and what's the strategy
Agreed.
that the board wants to take so that if there has to be a member in or someone has to step in for somebody, we would know what the agenda is from, from the board. In that context, so that you know it's represented in that situation. Uh, I mean, obviously that is the application of members of the board going to these different, these groups, boards and commissions, is that you're not just representing your own interests, you're actually representing the interests of the collective board. In the last several months I've been here, I don't know that, and there's been a lot moving. So to create space where we can actually do that and go through not just the assignments, but say, hey, where is Jazzcom headed or where is this group headed and what's the thoughts of your other peers to have, to create some space for that dialogue, I think would be super helpful for the commissioners.
Thank you. Yeah, and then I, and then I just want to bring the one more thing up here, which would be that, um, and I have already flagged this to, to Leonard too, that once every month on a Wednesday, um, there is another conflict, that the transportation policy board changed its, like it used to start at seven thirty and now they move, Andy finally got his way and they moved it to eight thirty. And, um, and, and I was just brand new. So I, I'm, I'm just listening to this going, okay, well, that sounds good to me. Eight thirty sounds way better than me.
Couldn't do it while I was on.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, it sounds great to me. And then I look and realize, oh, you know, we have a board session scheduled that day. So not, not only that, I have transportation policy board from eight thirty to ten and then ORCA. And I know, I, I think I'm back up on ORCA and Emily is, um, you know, I think the first one, but it completely eats up that whole morning on Wednesday and, you know, and I for one would say that when it comes to work sessions, it's like, that's to me, one of the most important things that, you know, um, that we can do together, you know, as a commission. And so I don't want to miss it. I don't want to miss our time that we have together. Um, and so I, I wonder about us adjusting that once a week.
You said, and you had a letter? Change it back? Send me a new letter?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, exactly.
Your project.
He's been working it.
Right, yeah. So that's a once a month thing and I, I, um, I just think we might need to.
And so when does, the meeting ends at, from eight thirty to nine thirty?
Eight thirty to ten.
It goes, I mean, on my calendar, my whole morning's booked. It says eight thirty to twelve. And then the work, work session is from nine to twelve.
Yeah, it's, it would be, I think it's a ninety minute meeting and then ORCA's a two hour meeting from ten to twelve. ORCA's, ORCA and SWAC have always been problems because they're on Wednesdays during the workday and for the commissioners, we've always used those days.
I think sometimes you gotta make judgment calls, you gotta do your best. And like, there's five of us now, so there might be a time when, you know, Ty's got, hey, he's like, hey, guys, I gotta make it to this thing because on the agenda, it's pressing.
Right.
You know, just like the other day, they went to the FIFA
Right.
event. That was, you know, so we have the flexibility to do that as long as, you know, like, I've been on boards where you're, you don't want to miss out because, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Right. Just don't do anything important when I'm not here.
But we're not, yeah, I respect your FOMO.
Yeah.
But I don't think we're at that place where, you know, if you, you could coordinate with, you know, an absence on occasion at outside of here or here.
Right.
And I want to mention George, since George watches all these, he probably loves hearing you say how great the steady meeting is and you're having FOMO about missing those.
I am. Well, I'm, you know, he'll find that about me is I want to be everywhere.
But you can coordinate on the agenda. So if there is something, like you said, I mean, all jokes aside, this is important to me. We have a flexibility to have it on a Tuesday or Wednesday. We will absolutely work with commissioners to make sure that we're putting it on a day that they can participate in an important conversation to them, their district, the constituents.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, and also like if you miss a meeting there, you know, like yesterday, like last week when we were at the agenda, we were not here for agenda setting, I went back and, and looked at it later on and just got any comments and, um.
Which is nice for board stuff, but you know, like philosophically for me, like what this board's doing together is top priority.
Right.
I mean, the, the outside board and commission, like, yeah, and on occasion there's a big vote, you're dealing with the budget or whatever, you know, but I would say, you know,
Right.
four times out of five or nine times out of ten, you know, being here with doing what we're doing is, is our top priority.
Okay.
That's all I take into it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, cool. Sounds good. Uh, and, um, yeah, I think that's it for me.
For, any, okay, boards and, we're still on boards, so.
Okay.
You still on boards, Commissioner Meehan? Okay, go ahead.
I want to discuss planning commission. So I requested two weeks ago an update on planning commission. I know that members' terms expired in December. Like I want to know, like, do they have a quorum to meet? Which terms expired? There apparently there was confusion with mine where apparently, uh, the person thought their term expired last year and then they're like, oh no, it's two years. And so I think that as commissioners, we need to know which planning commissioners are active and ready to go. Do they have a quorum to meet? Uh, which term, which commissioners, planning commissioners' terms expired? Have we received any applications for them? And if so, can those be distributed, especially to the commissioners that have to appoint new commissioners or reinstate them? Um.
Great topic.
So, yeah, I, I'm not sure. I didn't receive an update, uh, from my request two weeks ago. I'm not sure if anyone else has. But, um, I know that there are planning commissioner meetings coming up and I'm like, wait, do they even have a quorum since terms expired in December or?
The clerk, uh, reached out to, I believe, Legal just to ask some of the finer points of your questions. Um, did we receive response back yet?
We did. Um, I think that was regarding, um, uh, having a new commissioner come on at the time back in December during that transition.
Wanted to give an update?
Yes, um, and we sent out an email with all of the information rounded up. So currently I believe there are four, um, planning commissioners whose appointments expired December thirty first.
Four?
Four.
There's four vacancies right now. Okay, can you tell us who they were or what?
April then, are they vacant or?
No, they're not vacant.
Expire, are they in holdover?
I think staff were looking into whether or not there was language in the bylaws, um, like some of our advisor boards have that state. Um, uh, the appointees may continue serving until
Perplexed.
reappointed or a successor is appointed.
So just to clarify, because, because this is like, this is being, and folks will watch this. You're not saying that there's four vacancies. You're saying that there's four people that, that their terms have expired.
Four folks who's terms have expired. I know the staff have been in contact with them.
Okay.
Um.
So, so you have the names. Can I have them?
Yeah, um, it is Eric Casino. Who is the district two at large.
Actually, before we do that, so Director Arai had some questions as well. So I think that there's a couple of pieces that we need to put together. So your question is heard. Director Arai had some questions. There are some questions for Legal. Let us round that up and get you more information before the end of the day.
What are the questions for Legal if I may ask?
I need to know that too.
I'm not sure what that question was. It was just addressed and.
Why don't you go out and see if Ashley's free?
Sure.
So we can bring her in. But go ahead and finish Commissioner Minzer's question about the names.
So Eric Casino, who is the district two at large representative? Joel Hanson is the district three representative.
At large?
I believe so, but I'll need to confirm that. Doesn't say that on the roster.
It is because he was out, he wasn't in my district anymore after the redist- after the fight.
Scott Nelson is a district four representative. And Bill Fishburne, who is a district, district four at large representative.
He lost both.
Yeah, weird. Commissioner, I think that the, the question is to what Amy said, and it actually is coming in. Is there language that puts them in a holdover pattern or not? Um, and, or at the time that their term expires in December, are they expired and then the board has to be appointed or do something like?
Typically, like at the city, they're done. That's it. At the cities.
Some of our boards and commissions have language that put them in holdover?
But it, like I'm saying, planning commissions at municipalities is.
You're done.
Yep, and, and we, we got in trouble because sometimes you forget to reappoint them and they'd be seated there for months and then all of a sudden the things that they voted in on were.
Boy.
Yeah.
So I don't think, Amy, you've had a chance to round that information up, right?
Right, I think staff and I have been, uh, communicating on it and we just need to round up all of the information um, to determine eligibility of the applicants we've received, um, and get those off to you all.
So I, I would like to see all the applicants. I mean, I don't want other people to filter through them. I mean, I guess that's the.
We don't.
Right? I mean, that.
Sometimes it doesn't really work that.
Well, I mean, if anybody applies, we're allowed to look at who applies, right?
We would send all of them to you.
I just didn't want them to go through eligibility.
But that would be for your district.
Yes, absolutely.
But there's an at large position for each of us and you, like you're.
There's an at large.
Inspired for you, you could pick anyone.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But no one's filtering, but I'd say more often than not, there are no like people just, there, there, there's no stack of applications. Like, we often go out and recruit people and
Yeah.
and ask them to apply because we don't have, you know, a stack of just waiting eager
Sure, sure.
planning commissioners. So, but if there, if there were, you'd have them.
Right.
Right?
It is becoming a hotspot, I will say. Yeah, I just want to make sure that. We're getting more and more people. No one goes through and removes them for eligibility reasons. I just want to see anyone.
Just to make sure we're, we're clear on what the question is. Have you been able to round up the, the question of when, if they, if their term expires, are they done and the commissioners need to jump on the appointment? Or is there any holdover?
Um, they would need to be reappointed before they could take action. We specifically did not schedule anything that required action at their first meeting tomorrow night. So you, the board can appoint, um, at their first meeting in February if need be.
Then I, we need, I'll, I'll take responsibility, commissioners, we need to jump on getting these reappointed. Because we, and I appreciate you flagging it for this morning. Um, we don't want the planning commission to not have uh, the resources they need and the folks in seat, and that's something that we should be worked with your offices to, to drum that up. Also, have we communicated with folks whose terms have expired? Are, are they?
I have. So I, we reached out to Scott Nelson and Bill Fishburne, the appointments in district four, and they would like to be reappointed. And I, I, I do that tonight.
Okay, all right. But my question is, has staff reached out to those folks whose terms have been expired? Do they know that their terms are expired?
Yep, they've all submitted applications, the ones that were in reappointment. So we had them do that, um, last year. Um, and so I think it's Commissioner Hanson, Fishburne, um, Nelson, and then Casino. And Casino, we let him know with you, you know, a new commissioner coming on, that was one that, you know, we weren't sure about that reappointment. And so I think it's good that the board waited until you were seated to make that decision. Um, and my understanding is that they'll probably all still come tomorrow night. Um, and we'll still engage them, you know, as if they're commissioners. Um, they just won't be able to participate in any actions.
Have we received any other applications?
We've received a couple, um, and a couple just real recently, within the last week or so. I'll pull all of the applications and their names and which district they reside in.
And I'm, I'm really interested in just making sure we're walking through those steps, uh, or we receive the applications from my district. I'm just going to start with me. Or I receive all applications before I reappoint. The only normal person that's already on the board.
And, and you can do your own recruitment, you can do your own weighing in from your district.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm quick to reappoint mine because I just appointed them last year. They were, those were my appointments. So.
Yeah, and, and I will say that, you know, Leonard and, and Amy, prior to me coming into office, they notified me of this and and I've known about this and I've actually already gone out, met and done my recruiting and, and, um, I'm familiar with all of that. I just want to make sure that I, if, if people have sent in an application, that they're at least acknowledged, um, you know, and, uh, so that's all.
Yeah. Commissioner, did you say you nominate Phil Fishburne and Scott Nelson for reappointment? We can have them to today's to check out.
So that's two of the four, but there's an at large. So we haven't done, with, do we normally deal with recruitment?
Typically, you start standard recruitment online.
So is that something commissioners would like to do?
I think it is at large, I think, right?
It's just a three's at large position.
Yeah, I, to me, it, because these are different and they're commissioner appointed, like, it's really up to the commissioner if they want to be recruited.
Okay.
I mean, if I want to reappoint mine, I don't, I'm not going to go, I don't feel any need to go out and recruit.
Absolutely.
If I have someone in mind, if I don't, then I can ask for, for recruitment. That's my prerogative.
Okay.
I mean, just as an example.
Absolutely. So we'll, we'll stand by then.
And I feel like I probably could make a recommendation too, as long as I had a chance to see today, if there were any other applications. Okay, all right.
Commissioner Hanson, I think is the only other one that I haven't heard mentioned.
Yeah, I, I just texted him.
Oh.
I've never heard from him that, I didn't know he was expired, so I haven't had a conversation with him if he wants reappointment. If he wants reappointment, I will put him.
He's, he does. I think, um, I was there when he came in and.
Okay, well then you can put him up there.
So it sounds like we have three of the four and we'll possibly have.
Probably four.
Four when Commissioner Grant gets the outstanding application. So thank you, Commissioner Meehan, for bringing this up because you helped us round this up and get everything in the corral this morning. Good job.
And, um, I will say it is a delightful planning commission to work with right now. Um, they really have just gelled with all that transition last year. You know, there's always a worry with all these new people, but they work so well together and they care so much about all of the work, um, being done. So, thank you.
So we're going to slap these on today's?
Slap them.
Slap them on, yeah.
Twenty twenty-five slap action.
All right, good.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, for coming out. Thank you, Josh, for helping out with that.
Okay, so, uh, other advisory board items before we move on to proclamation calendar. We need to start proclamation.
Thank you, commissioners, for your continued input. Uh, we would have the opportunity to round up with some of the questions. And thank you, Commissioner Grant, for your extra time. What we have here is a list with some additions based on Commissioner input for the consent proclamations and, uh, Commissioner Minzer, I think this gets us to where we are doing a lot more, like the commission wanted, uh, and aren't, aren't necessarily, um, on the consent side, we don't have the limitation of just time constraints and how many we can fit in each meeting. And then there was an overview of what we'd be doing on the various months. Again, this is a, because it's the first time implementing something like this, we're going to have one a month. We hope that as we get a rhythm going, we can add every meeting that there's some type of, uh, community presentation. And the goal is that we really highlight the good work that's taking place in the community with all the partners and the groups that work within the county and not just the hard work that our county staff do, but in addition, everyone that does work in one of these areas. So this is a list for your overview and perspective. Any thoughts?
I, yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. Um, so, uh, the first one is for April, the Fair Housing Month. Uh, that is one that, um, the realtors group does want to bring in a group of people. Uh, they are only requesting this from us. And also this is something where, um, the auditor's office also wants to highlight the work that they've been doing on the Red Line and the covenants. Um, and so that's one of the ones that I think we really should highlight specifically because we say that housing and racial equity is, is something that we all care about. And so I think it's, it's something that really we should highlight the work that, um, has been done on the covenant so far as well as, uh, bringing in different groups to, um, talk about the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight, which really reflects on the housing discrimination and segregation that's happened. So, um, just.
Sounds good.
So your proposal is to move it from the second, third column to the second column with a presentation, public presentation.
Correct.
At one of the, we're not only going to have, we're only going to have one April meeting, is that right? Because there's, isn't the first meeting canceled?
I believe we have two because there's a, there's also a fifth Tuesday in April.
Oh, okay. So there's two possibilities then.
Yes, and I think we can pull that off based on Commissioner, um, he has, um, description of that. I think we can definitely do that.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, Commissioner?
Yes, um, I like the Miss in Person's Awareness Month. Um, I think we have to coordinate with the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month with Lynn and that group. Um, they usually come in and talk about, um, the events that they're holding during that time. Um, and so I think just letting them know that the format has changed. I, I know they'll partly request a, a resolution. Um, we've given, given it to them in the past, but. but if we can touch base with...
You know, the alternative is they come and give public con, you know, they get their proclamation and they give a public comment in four minutes.
No, I understand that piece. It's just, we just have to coordinate with them, knowing that it's not going to be something where we're going to be reading the proclamation.
But I would just, in that communication, explain to them that, you know, what we would love to see is them come and give a public comment at the same time that we're doing the consent proclamation. It's just slightly modified from the old way.
We can absolutely do that, and then also, it allows commissioners to give an opportunity to comment and thank them for coming. So to Commissioner Mentor and Meier, I think we can get there. But I agree with you, giving them a heads up so they know what to expect early and don't feel like we are changing directions for them, like we're not honoring what they're doing.
Yes.
We can definitely communicate that.
And same thing with the National Hispanic Heritage Month. It's just something where we let individuals know that it won't be an actual proclamation. I know that the Hispanic Affairs Office was planning to do something this year, but if we let them know then, that way we can coordinate.
So on the third column, we're not saying we're doing all of those as consent. Are those the ones we are saying we're going to do?
That's what's for consideration. What we did is we had the list, we took commissioner input, we added to the list, and now's the time, if you want to make any adjustments. Otherwise, we would put all of these, start plugging them into the various meetings and have them as part of the consent calendar.
Okay. National Poetry Month, I like that. Who came up with that one? Rachel Green? Commissioner Klaus? Okay, any questions or concerns about that in terms of the...
No, but I do have a question. I do have a question about next month. I mean, so February is African American History Month, and what do we have? Do we have something set up? I mean, we've got only about a week and a half and what's the...
This will, this will be the second meeting in February, so we have about four or five weeks. We've already started to get some things prepared.
Okay.
We're waiting for the board to take official action, and then we will send out a summary. I think the team is working on the summary for each event. Allows you all to provide perspective because we want you to engage your community contacts as well, and then we'll have something that you can send out to folks and we can coordinate that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have a couple of contacts, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So we'd be doing that in the middle meeting?
The second meeting, I believe.
February eighteenth.
Okay, I would, yeah, just, I know the pop-up museum is happening again, and I would want to make sure we could make sure there's still time for people to... To, I think there would be, I think they do it each Saturday in February.
Okay.
Asha will be holding several events as well. We also have the New Chapter of the NAACP that's active, so there's just different groups that I think will be very interesting.
Yeah, because I would really love to see, you know, any activity we could get, whether if they wanted to pop up here to enroll people at the NAACP, if we, if they had any ideas about how we can collaborate and or have a presentation here or leave something out in our, you know, to really give us some oomph. I mean, this is a great opportunity for a lot of really incredible work that's going on across our county right now, and I know we're all, you know, have some contacts, and so I'd be, I'd just love to see it get big.
Yeah, I think we're going to start this, it's going to grow, it's going to create an expectation and engagement like we haven't had in the past, and it'll be good for our community groups and our staff and the commissioners to all kind of work together on this. So I'm thankful for your direction on that, unless there's any other comments?
Just in case the clerk isn't aware that, you know, like, since we've had the last proclamation on this, I think it was August where the Thurston Chapter of NAACP launched. So there's, you know, like, a group that didn't exist before with a lot of people, community leaders that are familiar to the board, just to make sure that they're looked into communications and outreach for the things that we're planning.
I got roped into helping with their newsletter, so it's something that...
Yeah, well, I saw them, we saw yesterday, I saw about fifty new members get signed up, so it was really incredible, yeah.
Okay. They're pretty good, aren't they? Yeah, Commissioner Klaus?
So in May, we have Missing Persons Awareness Month, which I think is really good. We also don't have anything on the community engagement column for veterans or military, and I was wondering if we could maybe do the Military Appreciation Month as a presentation, or we could also maybe do the public comment thing where we invite a group to give public comment, but I think that it might be a good idea to do some sort of community engagement for military since I don't see anything for the whole year on that.
I mean, yeah, there's always the opportunity to connect to our Veterans Advisory Board, and I'm sure there's many other places to plug in to community, but...
We can do the same approach, Commissioner Klaus, where we have to come out. So all these will be recognized, it's that if they want to come out and give a comment, we can bring them to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, then let's go on to future items, which is our last topic. It's ten seventeen, so we have plenty of time. I know County Manager had a couple of items, but I'll start with County Manager and then we'll go with the board members.
Just to keep the commissioners' surprise of the ongoing conversation regarding the legislation, what was the number again?
Fifty-one, fifty-four.
I have it memorized.
Thank you, you won fifty-four. There will be a hearing this Thursday, Thursday one thirty. We are being, it is being suggested to us that we have a commissioner or a couple commissioners come out and provide testimony. I want to give thanks to our lobbyist, Deborah, who's been helping talk this through, and I know some of the commissioners have had conversations with some of the legislators that are working on this. You know, unfortunately, the quickness of this moving and the lack of, you know, broad awareness, staff have been working hard over the last few days to look at the language and to have these conversations, but it hasn't been easy because it's a matter of bringing folks up to speed as to what are some of the implications of that language, as, you know, the county commissioners have seen it and have expressed to staff, and the staff also agree with their perspectives. So I just wanted to bring it up, that we will be asking for commissioners' availability on Thursday. Are we rounding up with our lobbyists just to have a touch base on the language? We're at a place where we're being asked to change, what was our recommendation on changing some of the language? And while we're not opposed to that, we just don't want to move so quick that we're making changes that we don't know what those consequences are either. And so some of our recommendations is just to put things back the way it was in areas that aren't the cleanup of the clerk language, that we really don't have any issues.
Striking those pieces of that connected budget process.
Yeah, but, yeah, so I think there's a general lack of awareness about the issue surrounding this that was out there, not just for you as commissioners, but also for WOSAC and others as we're engaging. And that's something that we're just having to overcome a little bit, is why is there a concern in explaining that, walking that script?
Okay, I know for, I mean, so I'm in Sammer Curry Council Thursday, and I missed the last, I missed the last two meetings, so I actually declined a speeching engagement in order to prioritize not missing a third meeting in a row for that. So I guess I'm not jumping at the chance to do that, although if, you know, if I have to do it, I can step away. But just throwing that out there, everybody looks at their schedule.
So can I, I'm going to ask some questions on this. I haven't really seen, and, you know, I think maybe you and I can connect later too, but I haven't really seen any process around how we collaborate consensus, you know, consensus in a quick way around legislation. I haven't seen any formal, you know, I guess this is just me coming from my professional background, but in several different agencies and at King County that we had a very, always had a very specific way where a bill comes through, everyone gives their input on it, staff gives their input on it, you know, and then we make a decision. Like, I mean, individually, not in some big meeting, and it's like you have twenty-five minutes to respond to this message. I mean, that's the kind of way we do bill analysis at the state, and, you know, you have to get back, and I've seen that with one bill. And I'm just wondering how that process works and how we're all informed when another commissioner is going to go testify on a bill, or because I would assume, and I don't know the rules on this either, that if one commissioner is testifying, is it the voice of all the commissioners? And I don't, I just have never been a commissioner, so I have to ask these questions. I don't know how the ways that we get this done, and so I'm hoping somebody could give me that update.
You don't get to go outside and do something like that and say, "I'm here on behalf of the county," unless we have made a motion that has designated you as our spokesperson. But there's nothing that prohibits you from saying, "I'm Rachel Grant, a Thurston County Commissioner, and I believe this."
Right.
So like, there's two very, right, there's two, those are two very distinct things.
Absolutely, and I get that too. I mean, I've testified as a human, like, I am a person of lived experience testifying, and I am Budget Manager of DSA just testifying, so I get that, I guess I'm just...
One extra, one extra detail is you are permitted to use your title as long as you explicitly... You have, I think you actually have to affirmatively say, "I am not speaking on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, but I am Commissioner, County Commissioner Rachel Grant." That's like the nuance. You can't leave it ambiguous.
Consensus gathering has to be done in the boardroom too. Otherwise, we're violating the Open Public Meetings Act. So as things happen quickly, it's very difficult to orchestrate a unified, you know, thing officially. So like, you have to be careful of that. So if the County Manager is sending things out and collecting input from us, and then there, all of a sudden, there becomes a back and forth, we're violating the OPMAs too. So it's not, it's a different landscape to kind of collect census.
And in this situation, we're on the back foot because, you know, had we known that the aspect of our organization was doing research to present something that should have been shared broadly back in November, which would have given us a few extra months, now we're talking about days. Now, this came to the attention to a commissioner from a WOSAC conversation in her official capacity, and then we're trying to ground it and understand what the context is, sharing it with other commissioners, everyone's, you know, individual commissioners are doing their analysis, and I activate because there's three saying there's a concern, so there's, you know, folks are saying they're concerned, and we're bringing it now to the agenda to have a conversation about where do we go from here, understanding that in a few days, you know, with the holiday, we have two days before there's going to be a hearing, and our lobbyist was not tracking this because there was nothing to track in that we never said there was a concern, and it was being represented that Thurston County was putting this forward because different aspects of our organization were activated.
Right.
And so that's where, in the conversation last week, when we met with some of the elected officials, there was some concern expressed by commissioners saying, "Well, we didn't really know about this. It wasn't on the radar." And so I think that's the uniqueness of this situation.
Sure. You know, and I guess I would say that I, it would be, I really hope that we can think about and finding, and it may need, that there needs to be something right now in this session, a stopgap, but some sort of process that's very direct of how this works because that's great. I mean, like, for example, I want to, you know, when we had a bill analysis that was asked to give input, I never got a response back on what the final decision was on that bill. I gave my feedback, but I don't know whether someone testified or if somebody, if that bill went forward, if the three, if anybody said yes, no, or not. I just was said, "This is my opinion," and I don't know anything more. Same with this one, where, you know, some people are meeting over here, talking, and then, and then, and I just don't have any idea what's going on. So I just don't, there needs to be some sort of step-by-step, I mean, I know that there can be, you know, just a step-by-step process so that we can all see clearly, you know, three people are okay with this, so we're going to move forward, and this is what's happening on this bill. So like, and then the other thing I want to mention, just since we're in this talk, discussion, is that I really hope that by next year, we would have a process within Thurston County, Thurston County, where we would talk about any legislative, like, you know, proposed legislation prior, you know, working our way up to, you know, if there's anyone, anyone, you know, doing that, then we would know at some sort of, we'd have a legislative meeting and a legislative bill analysis process. Because it's very concerning to me that we don't have a bill analysis process for Thurston County, that we don't have our staff looking at every bill that goes before the session to decide how much money, if that bill was going to go forward, would cost our county. You know, most agencies, I've been at, have budget, our budget staff would be looking at these all day long, every day, and making decisions about whether or not, you know, if they do pass it, we have to make sure someone puts it in the appropriation bill that we get funding attached to it. And so I just, just saying that I, it's, I just am trying to get a better understanding of how we go through and make and do and create action during the legislative session. I just haven't gotten any training or talked to anyone about it, so...
Let me provide just some of the history. Leonard started after the last legislative session. We didn't do things with the interim county manager the way we had done them in the past. Prior, so, so I'm going back two years and the five years before that, there would be a spreadsheet with all the bills that county manager and staff had like determined would maybe, maybe touch on the county business, and I didn't love this process. So I'm not advocating for this, I'm just letting you know what we did because it's an answer to your question of like what process we've used. So we had a camp, we had a spreadsheet, and then right January, first meeting of Jan, basically every Tuesday morning, and this is agenda setting, on the agenda after we go through the agendas was going through the legislative tracker, and the first couple were very laborious because they were all new. After that, they went a little quicker because we would just, we would highlight things that had changed or what had the hearings coming up, or staff came back with more information. But first couple of meetings were very laborious because we'd go bill by bill, somebody would give a thumbnail sketch, and we'd try to decide if we supported it or didn't support. I didn't like that at all. I tended to think that it's okay for the board to be neutral unless we really understand a bill and know that it's going to be impactful. I felt like we were being pressed to give thumbs up or thumbs down to like, you know, a hundred bills, and I did not feel that I understood a hundred bills. I maybe understood three or four of them really well. So I tended to just vote no or neutral, abstain on a lot of them because I didn't feel like I was in a position to take a position. But once we'd gone through that, then at least there was an official position of the board through that process, and then if there was a hearing coming up and Deborah, our lobbyist, needed somebody to go, you know, we could all be called on to take positions consistent with that tracker. Like, that was kind of the decision matrix that Commissioner Fornier was talking about, where we'd made a decision consistent with that tracker, I could go on a whim and testify against. I didn't need to be appointed by the board. A commissioner could go up there and say, "The county took a position X and we're against this bill." That's kind of how we did it. It was really time-consuming, and I, like I say, I felt like we were asked to like weigh into things that we didn't totally understand, and it made me really uncomfortable, especially when I was a brand-new commissioner. I was like, "What?" I mean, you know, I, I mean, because it was my first few meetings, just like, it's your first few meetings. You come on board in January, and now I'm being asked to take a position on a hundred pieces of legislation and how they affect county government. I don't even know how county government works. How would I know how a piece of legislation is going to affect county government? So, super uncomfortable for me. I didn't love the process, and then, but that's what we did. And last year, we didn't even quite do that because I don't think, really. We have our top priorities from our legislative priorities. Those, you know, were usually dialed in, and we do a good job of pushing and tracking and testifying and meeting, but it's all the other ones, right? The ones we didn't see coming or we're just hearing about, you know, at some random meeting, and then, you know, so it's a little frenzied.
And I would, I will just say really quick that, so that process that you're talking about is a familiar, very familiar process to what I would be expect within, you know, we always have a legislative tracker, but maybe the answer here is that that's just, lives within Leonard's team, and that we trust our staff to look at and analyze as long as we know that they're all being looked at and staff, because I don't know how things affect the county government, the staff does. And so that would have been my job at the county when I worked at the county, right? Is that someone, my... Is that someone, my staff would actually be, someone's on point for my staff looking at these bills if it comes to them from someone that Leonard, worked for Leonard. And, um, you know, only would it be brought to us if we really have it flagged at a high level, like, you know, that this is a big deal. And then just like today, it would be brought to us. But then we would always have the ability to look back at that ledge tracker at any point in time and be like, oh yeah, looks like Leonard's team already looked at this and totally doesn't matter. And we can move on, you know, but it has to be there somewhere. I'm only looking at WASC's tracker right now, and I don't know what, how any of you all feel or how our, our county feels about a specific issue.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, this is something where I've advocated before that we need a legislative, uh, person in the county to help us internally, to help us, uh, track everything. Especially my first year, Commissioner Minzer was kind enough to give me LSC. And, and that was, um, definitely a learning curve for me. And, um, you know, just going back to your point on, on different bills, like this morning, I have two hats on as I'm co-chair for, uh, LSC for WASC. So I was testifying on a WASC priority this morning. You know, and I said, I used my WASC LSC title. Um, I did say I was a Commissioner, but I did not testify on behalf of the board. But usually the board does support WASC's priorities, um, since, you know, we do vote on them at the end of the year, and that's something that all members vote on. So, um, that is, uh, just, you know, I agree that, you know, just be clear that you're not testifying on behalf of the board. In terms of legislative process, uh, this one is going to be a longer session, so I think there's room for improvement and room for, um, Leonard to kind of get his grip under what a legislative session here in Washington State means. Because this is his first one as well, and, um, I think you came in the middle of one, a short session last year. And so, um, you know, it, you know, just that way he can also learn the process and we can help adapt, uh, next year. I think we're just going to have to rely a little bit heavier on Deborah this year and, um, you know, Leonard's staff and, uh, see how we move forward. And I'll keep flagging bills as they come up on LSC and sending them over if it's something that has, um, has a high priority on it, um, so.
I would just, one, just one quick point. It's sort of related to, to your question. I mean, I, my frustration, I mean, I think the answer, the real answer to your question is that my sense was that doing what you're proposing and, and it sounds like it's done in a lot of state agencies would just swallow us up to a degree. I mean, you're saying like staff should be going through every bill that, you know, I mean, there, there's hundreds and hundreds of bills. I mean, doing a finance, doing our own internal financial analysis for every potential bill, I, I don't think we have the capacity. So, but my point was, what I was kinda shocked by was even the aftermath of the bill, the bills that actually pass, we don't really have anyone on point to like. So I've seen situations where legislation passed and like, we just didn't know. Like, no one in Thurston County knew, and we found out six months later, we're in non-compliance with some new requirement. Because we didn't even on the backend have some, the capacity to have somebody analyze what actually got put into law, much less analyzing the hundreds and hundreds of bills that are just proposed. So that just gives you a perspective into some of the frustration I've had over the years of our lack of capacity and, and kind of feeling like we're just getting, you know, tossed around. But County Manager, you were next.
I was just, I was just saying, well, it's not perfect. That's why like WASC, WASC's really important because it's kind of a force multiplier for us. And us being as involved with WASC as we are, we're able to use them in, in some of the ways that maybe a larger county would be able to internalize some things. The, I, I, something that I, I want to see us talk about and maybe take action on pretty quickly is, is we're all, we, we, or the county's always good about, uh, policy stuff and, and policy issues when it comes to state. Just asking for money is, is not something that the county has done a lot of. And, you know, we've got several projects just already on the table that I'd, I'd like to see us, uh, put in a request for. And, and especially the, the Hilltop renovation. You know, we, if we're, we're saying we wanna put five, five million dollars into that renovation, I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't do a capital budget request to ask the state to help us fund half of it. It's a project that's absolutely shovel ready, that would be easy for them to say yes to. It would be easy to make an argument in favor of getting state funding with the fact that the, the state uses our courthouse as, as their courthouse. And, you know, and I, while we've done a better job, uh, kind of dialing back the $50 million temporary investment, still a $5 million investment on something that is a, has a five-year shelf life is, is still a lot. And, uh, you know, taking on debt to do, to do that is, is still, it's still a big deal. So I, I do, I think we'd be wise to ask the state, make a capital budget request for at least half of what we're already putting local money into. And, I mean, even if they say no, we're still gonna be able to move forward, but we already tell them that.
Yeah, um, these are all great conversations. What I'll do is I'll add this, some of this conversation to our next planning session. It'd be great to kinda talk this through. Uh, Rob Gelder, uh, before he left, was really taking up the reins on the state side because of his detailed knowledge. It was helpful for him, helpful for us to have him there because he would be able to assess what the impacts to counties since he lived in that world for so long. His departure leaves a hole. We don't have a legislative team and our budget team does not do the type of analysis that you mentioned. They don't have a bandwidth for that to what Commissioner Minzer said, but that doesn't mean we can't come up with a process. What we have right now, I think, are some very valuable components. We just have to connect them. Deborah's perspective, WASC's perspective, and how we take that and figure out what's the impact to our staff. And then to Commissioner Minzer's point, um, not only tracking, because things change from the time you start to the time you finish. But, um, when they are approved, what's the impact after the fact? Which can sometimes be just as important as then weighing in so we can make sure that we're on, uh, on track with implementing those changes and not leaving something off. This is something that, to Commissioner Mejia's point, I came in, uh, in April and probably until, uh, like May or June, the fire hose was still like, the PSIs were pretty high pumping. And there wasn't a lot that we were tracking. Right now, what we have is, uh, you know, an awareness with Deborah that we're gonna need more information. And then also, we need to be figuring out from a timing standpoint, when does the board weigh in? Because the, the bill you mentioned, uh, the 2024 board was in full support. And so we thought that was just like a, a courtesy, hey, we're, Deborah's, we didn't even have to take a position on that. She was wanting us to take a position because we had had so much interaction on that topic. But when we sent it out, um, individual comments that came through from commissioners were, there wasn't the support. And so there was no official county action. There, there was just a couple of individual commissioners that ended up saying that they were supportive. That was.
For the record, I was one. Would you be able to type that?
The one about the SVPs.
So, so in that environment, that's, that's a, we gotta dial that in when the new board gets seated, um, just like a lot of this process. Uh, we gotta dial that in, um, prior to us starting the calendar year because that's when things start to get up and, and going. And so the chair of Isha and I have been talking about how we do that more effectively, and this is gonna be a building year for us, 2025.
Absolutely, and I, I wanna just mention, so just so you guys are, are really, you know, familiar with, um, I'm, I'll, I'll only speak to the time that I was at, I'm gonna forget the state, um, and, and just the county. Uh, and what I saw as far as an organizational pattern for King County, um, you know, different budget, I mean, different offices and departments had their own lunch person. So we just had one person, right? And that just gonna, one single person who tracks all things that might touch behavioral health at King County, and there was a tracker. And, um, and they are, their job is, and, and just so you know, Leonard, there's this really cool thing online that, that you can type into, and then it tracks all action. So every moving part, it all just does it for you. But, uh, you know, and then if there was ever a moment where, like she would triage everything, and then if it was going to directly affect us, then it might come to a staff. Maybe, maybe, you know, for a real analysis. And then, this is the, the, so I wanna be really clear that this is the proactive, this is the way that it, it works usually, um, is that then that staff would, um, say, oh, this is gonna cost money. You just put a yes or no, quick review, yes or no, it's gonna cost money. Then it goes to a budget staff. So maybe one out of 150 bills go to a budget staff where we actually have to say something. Then the, we literally then would by the end of the, by, before the hearing would let the, the state know that for, and I'm gonna use this for an example. When the Behavioral Health Administration said they're gonna build 136, um, beds at, um, Maple Lane, uh, they had legislation that went through. And a bill went through and there was an appropriation for it. We should have at that time known about that because it affects our county and have immediately responded and said, we need, we have those dollars, treatment dollars, we need court costs, and we need, um, space to actually, space to actually have those ITA hearings. And then that would have been written into the budget process for the state of Washington and the appropriations, just like what Wayne just said, which is capital projects would have had a line item in it that said, if they're going to pass this policy, then they're going to, um, also need to put money in the budget to give to Thurston County to, to deal with the impact. And that's the proactive approach that I, I hope that by next year that we can be taking. Cause right now, we're in reactive where, you know, and I think we'll talk about it in, in a minute. You know, I agree with Wayne where there is, um, we don't have really anything put into the capital budget request, um, and that's generally something counties do. Uh, and so, uh, you know, we're working today to talk about that, and I'll let you go on to that in a minute. But, um, but I just, you know, for me, it would be really great. I think we're all gonna be able to work together wonderfully on this. I just think that, um, we've got to, I just, we kinda have to have a process just to stopgap one right now of like, hey, I'm using WASC too, you guys. You know, so I'm, I'm looking to you to say, hey, here's something that we need to think about. But we do have an opportunity, and the capital budget process and the appropriation process closes in like a week and a half. And so I want us to, to, to really be thinking about how do we leverage? Because we would have a lot more funding attached to the state budget if we got in on the front end and not after the fact. So, yeah.
So, uh, on that capital budget request, I, I would like to direct staff to develop a, a proposal for a capital budget request to, uh, obtain funding for the Hilltop project.
Can I add that staff are already working on this?
Yeah, they're already working on it.
So, okay, so one of the things I wanted to add is that based on conversations that we had with legislators, and this was specifically based on a comment that Representative Doglo made at the Legislative Breakfast on, are you going to make a capital or operational request? And so after the meeting, right, I clued in on that. I went over to Representative Doglo with Deborah and asked her, how much of a capital request can we make if we make one this year? She said, make it small. She's like, nothing big is going to pass this year. So based on that recommendation, I know Rob was working on it before he left on making a request. And so I'll pass it over to staff for that update. The second part of, uh, that is that, uh, I have reached out to, uh, last year, I was contacted by the AG's Union on the Capitol Hill remodel. And I provided them with some information. Based on those conversations, um, I think the best avenue of this is to, uh, have AG Nick Brown, which we have contacted his office to come and take a look at, um, the Capitol facilities and kind of see what his attorneys are having to deal with. That way, they could possibly make a capital request next year. So that's another avenue that, um, I'm currently working on. I let Leonard know that I've sent out an invitation as well as the court stakeholders that I've sent out a request to AG Nick Brown to come and tour our beautiful Capitol Hill campus. And, uh, kinda see what his AGs have to come through either when they're on trial or every Friday morning during the civil calendar. So, um, I'll give it over to staff to kind of update the board on the capital request that is being worked on.
Yeah, before, uh, Rob left, um, I think there was some connectivity on what, what to actually request. I, I need to follow up on his notes.
There's a lot going on in all of that that was just put out there. So we need to put all of those pieces together because we didn't wanna make any capital requests without getting ahead of ourselves on other things. So you've got the FJC potential courtroom expansion, you've got the courthouse hill, but then further down the road, you've got the big picture on the potential courthouse government center.
I wanna keep it simple.
Like the smaller ones.
The more times we go to the well, the more it could, uh, you know, change our position. So having this conversation is important.
I think you have to go to the well. We just, there's gonna be a big, like, pull out of the well in like five, six years. And if we get too close to that, like, you know, like, we ask, we ask a little dip in the well right now, five years from now, it's gonna be a different ballgame. And, you know, like, we haven't ever made an ask.
Well, and I, you know, and I guess this, this is kind of the example of, I didn't know Carolina was doing that. Carolina probably didn't know that I was talking to Judge Thomas, like, Indu had reached out and said that, that, um, uh, that we need to think about getting a capital request for, not for the regular courthouse, but for the FJC in order to, you know, so. If, if we, by next year, the goal would be, if we can all find a way to get to next year and have a, a process, so then it would be automatically, Carolina's already working on it, Rachel's gonna have to touch it. You know, uh, someone already knows that we should have, if there's policy. I would really think that, like with what Wayne was saying about, I really wanna get ahead of, if we have a $50 million project down the road. Whenever DSHS or any of these other agencies are making policy changes, we can write them down as every time they did this, this is why they should be giving us money in the capital budget in ten, in five years. Because they did this, 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 and this, which requires us to have more impact on our staff, and we need a bigger building, so they should pay for part of it. And, and that's how that works. And we wanna make sure we're, we're looking at those as a group regularly because then we'll know, we won't step on each other's toes, or, you know, I just don't ever want there to be any issue around, like, is Wayne doing it, or Rachel, or who's doing what? And, and then we just sound a lot more coordinated and, yeah, yeah.
I disagree with, uh, with what folks are saying. I think this area does need a lot more coordination. I, I will say that we also have to just look organizationally. Just, um, you know, a few months ago, the, the commissioners changed direction on the 50 million, and we just got decision to do the five. So what I'm seeing happen is these opportunities are out there, but we don't always have our ducks in a row, a row actually sees those opportunities. And if you make a lame ask, uh, that sometimes creates more problems than if you don't make any ask. Uh, the county hasn't made a lot of ask, I think, because we haven't really had the infrastructure to bring this stuff together. I think we're getting ready to do that, but having a, a, a clear direction, bringing everything, that's the work we're doing right now, which will prime the pump for us then to know exactly what we're gonna ask for. Uh, I do agree that this county's, uh, based on what I'm seeing other counties get, we seem to not necessarily have our oar in the water, and we need to do that. And so, you know, Rob stepping away from the county just creates a, a bit of a hole that we will work to fix. Cause we do have to assign somebody that knows how that moves around fairly quick and has the relationships to pick up the phone and call and make sure that we understand what that ask needs to look like in order to move across the finish line. Which I know, you all know is part of the, the secret of the sauce, right? How do you ask it? How do you present it? To whom? It's a timeframe so that you can actually get traction on it. But definitely a lot of great perspectives and things that we can be working towards this year so we can have a much stronger approach. Uh, and even the way we communicate how, who's working on what and what we're going for, uh, is part of that discussion.
So circling back to the original point on the, on 5154, is there, where, um, the work that you said has been, is being done? Uh, are we developing like a, a quick set of talking points for whichever Commissioner is available to go make those points? Cause I mean, I, I see it at my level, but like, I wouldn't be able to articulate from a staff level how this could negatively affect budget process and stuff like that. So having a little more detailed set of bullet points for the, for any of us that, that go up and do it would be great.
Can I add to that? I honestly think that somewhere needs to go with whichever Commissioner goes and testifies because if there are technical questions on there, um, it is best that, you know, we have a staff member there, usually when we wanna. Usually when we want to testify, I, I would either have Robin or a staff member to accompany me up when I testified. And if there were very specific technical questions, which sometimes there were, Robin was able to answer those questions. And I just think that having summer there to answer any technical questions will be, will be fruitful, so.
Yeah, we can definitely accommodate that. I think where, where we're still at though is, this came up at a, during a conversation with the auditor and some commissioners had questions. You know, my commitment was to engage with each of you to get your perspective so that we can round that up to a collective. And then Commissioner Mahia and I would go and speak to the auditor. There's no time for that at the, right now. Because what we didn't know last week was that the hearing was going to be on Thursday. And had we known that, we would have, I wouldn't even suggest that we try to do a roundup. What I don't have is board direction though on your position on fifty-one, fifty-four. And if there's enough or there to be a majority of the board that says this is a concern and we need to continue to take that language and, and try to get it removed.
I need to have, I need to see the bill. I don't even know what you guys are.
I've sent it to all the commissioners.
Oh, oh, I didn't read it all the way. So I was going to say, I haven't done that analysis yet, so.
I think this is a really important conversation. I also, I mean, I don't think any of us realized this hearing was happening on Thursday, which is unfortunate. But I was, I've read through about half of the bill. I haven't read through the whole thing. And I was kind of looking forward to the conversation when we debriefed after the county manager and Commissioner Mahia had a chance to touch base with the auditor. Because I know when concerns were raised last week, that was kind of what flagged this item and put it on my radar. So I haven't had like a full amount of time to really develop a strong opinion. But I think it's important just organizationally for us to have that conversation with the auditor so that we can kind of, I mean, I, I need to understand better what the concerns are. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. I don't have enough information to make a full decision on where I, what my perspective is.
And I also would love to hear what other people's concerns are, just so that, because then maybe it would help me understand what I'm not, what I'm missing. So like, like, because I've looked at some of it, but I just don't, because I'm new. I mean, that's my new card is that I am not aware of what other, you know, I want to be able to listen to the people that I, you know, I trust the other commissioners' viewpoints. And so I, I, that's the question I, I have on it too. It's like, I don't know how I can input on, on something I don't really understand what it affects yet, so.
Yeah, and that's the kind of manager I'm looking for is direction. Because we're going to expend resources on this and.
I think that's important, that it's like, I, I've heard from everybody that there's a red flag here and it's push pause. And, you know, like, that, that's where I'm at. It should be red flagged, that, you know, we should be sending a, you know, flare up saying, hey, everyone, look at this. WASAC flagged it and told everybody throughout the state that this is a bill that is, that is concerning, that they, they want to give more analysis.
I'm happy to work with you on, or anyone on doing a, like, a bill analysis and to look at it more carefully. Or, I mean, it's got to be done very quickly, within like a half hour. That's what bill analysis are, real fast.
Yep.
So, I have concerns on it as.
What I need is direction to get to mobilize the staff. Otherwise we'll stop the work we're doing so we can prior, we can work on another priority. You see, three commissioners brought this up in, in, in the, in the meeting that we had with the auditor. That triggered us to start looking at this in detail. But I didn't get official board direction. So if that's what I need in order to say, yeah, we're going to continue putting resources toward this. Otherwise there's other things that we can put our resources towards.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'll make a motion that to, to, that the, the board county committee should oppose the provisions of the bill that relate to the county budget, changes in the process of county budget. Now, if there's a second to that motion, we can discuss it and then we, you, you can hear the concerns of the board members to the extent we have them.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And now we can have discussion as to what, why I, I'm taking, I can speak to the, to it as a.
And I don't know anything, if somebody could just tell me what happened, like, I don't know anything about the meeting or anything like that, and so, yeah.
I mean, this kind of has to go back a little bit of history, right? I mean, there's, there's a, a conversation that we've had with the auditor, so I want to say since last spring or last, early last summer, where there's some older statutes. They, all the county, all the counties that have gone to charter, which is every county bigger than us, have set up their own process with their own budget office, et cetera. We're the biggest county in, in Washington State with no charter. There are some older statutes.
Spokane County is the biggest county without a charter.
Okay, Spokane and Thurston. We're the biggest, I mean, we're, there's a set of statutes that relate to the auditor's office making some preliminary work on presenting a budget. And there's been difference of opinion, but, but the, but, but there, but then a statute was passed that allowed commissioner to hire their own budget staff. The laws were unclear as to exactly how those things intersected, right? Like, does the county, does, if the commissioners hire budget staff, do they get to do everything? Do they get to do some things? Do they get to work? It, it's not clear. And the auditor had very clear ideas that, about how that worked. And she brought in our legal team. So we had, over the summer, we had a, a legal opinion from the prosecuting attorney that basically said, there's no answer in the law here. The commissioners have the right to hire budget staff, auditors have these like, you know, preliminary responsibilities. It's really a, a political question if you put it that way, or a policy question you guys should work out. There'd been an, an old MOU that had been worked out in the, in the past. It had kind of gotten out of date. So, we collectively decided to just, since there's no legal answer, let's work on that, on updating that MOU and trying to come to a set, to a negotiated agreement between the commissioner's staff and auditor's staff. And that process was ongoing and the auditor had a draft and it wasn't, we weren't comfortable with elements of it. That was still being worked through.
Okay.
Exactly who does what and when we see, when, when, when we, when this bill has come now. We're in the middle, and, and this bill, in my opinion, seems to say the auditor's duties are really the lead and the, and, and it backs, it, it, I mean, the auditor said it clarifies. What it clarifies is that the commissioner's staff is only now, rather than potentially being able to do a more broader set of tasks, is only there to assist the auditor, who would be, who would be the lead in all these budget related items. That is not consistent with, in my opinion, any bigger county that has worked on a more modern approach. It's not consistent with some of the goals of the county commissioners in terms of how we get information about the budget. So, and it comes in the middle of this process of us trying to negotiate through a, a process for Thurston County through this MOU. It's kind of, to me, kind of side, undercuts what we're trying to do and just basically gives the auditor the, the priorities that she wanted through legislative fiat rather than a, a working collaboration with the board. So that's, that's, that's the motivation why I would oppose those pieces of this bill. Now, some of this bill, you'll read, it just has to do with cleanup about clarifying some antiquated stuff about the clerk of the board and, and I'm fine with all that. But there are three provisions, I want to say. One is basically eliminates and, and eliminates the old language about what the board's budget staff can do and substitutes in language that they're there to assist the auditor. And that's the main thing. And then there's another piece about the internal auditor and that's a separate chunk that has a separate conversation to go with it. I'm mostly focused on the budget piece myself. And my motion is to oppose the bill as to the budget related provisions, but not the internal auditor.
And we oppose with recommendations of like the pieces we oppose and then the recommendations of what to move forward? Because that's what we oppose with recommendations to.
Yeah, that, that is the, the, what we're working on with Deborah is not a complete oppose. Because there's, like Commissioner Mensah mentioned, there's aspects about cleanup language on, on the clerk. But that's what was being communicated. It's, it's just cleanup language on that component. But there's three components that take away the authority from the board as we perceive it that we would say were opposed. Because it's been communicated that Thurston County was supportive of this, meaning Thurston County was supportive of this, folks are a bit backtracking right now to say, well, okay, well, does Thurston County have any changes? We're apprehensive to make any of the changes on those components because we don't know, they haven't been vetted. So we can't necessarily make those changes. We just want to strike that and leave the items that deal with the clerk and then move it forward.
WASAC had said that those items that deal with the clerk really aren't even real items throughout the county of concern. Like, that was kind of the weird part. It was like when, when I was talking to the W- WASAC policy staff, they, it seemed like, you know, the, the clarifying, the clerk language was so irrelevant and innocuous that it really didn't apply. They couldn't even think of counties where it would apply. And it, I mean, it was, it was, and it, judging by that, it seems like something that this entire bill should not be rushed and it should be, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a pressing issue that needs, none of it is a pressing issue that needs to be solved immediately. And, and everyone would be better off if it was.
Done offline, right?
Yeah, yeah, pulled out of there, you know, talked, you know, seriously amongst all those stakeholders that are affected. And that, that clearly hasn't taken a, taken part yet. So even if you haven't analyzed the whole bill, I think it's safe to say that this is something that the county should be telling the state to put a full stop on so that further analysis can be done.
Right.
Because we're not going to fix this thing, that's the thing.
So we've asked for a stop to be, to be placed, but, and, and for the, not to be heard on Thursday. But it sounds like that request didn't, didn't get traction.
Can I, and I can provide a little bit more information. This is what I was doing all day yesterday. So, the sponsor of the bill wants to see if there are other counties that are also, that it's not just Thurston County that is opposed to this. So WASAC has signed up for it. Spokane County has, is supporting us. They are also concerned with this bill.
They're supporting it or they're concerned?
They're concerned with it, they're supporting that, us and our viewpoint. Also have, I, I'm touching base later with Yakima County and, as well as Kitsap County. Me and Commissioner Manser happened to see one of their commissioners and we touched base lightly with them and kind of gave them an awareness of it. But we will be touching, I'll be touching base a little bit deeply more. And then I also have a, a meeting with Commissioner Janiki about this from Skagit. So, I, I've been touching base with different counties, just giving them a heads up. I have also asked for Paul to flag this up for conversation at our meeting for LSC on Thursday. It might be a little bit too late just because of the sign up times. But as I'm making counties aware of this, they are, they have the same viewpoint that we do, so.
I would just add, I mean, taking this up from our own, myopic, is that the word? Our own like personal view of this, up, up a level at a policy level. I mean, we have a great auditor's office, we have a great auditor and a powerhouse auditor. Not every county has that. I mean, you ask other counties, like, you want your auditor's office to run your entire budget process? They're like, what? They don't, their, their auditor's office doesn't have that. They didn't run, they didn't run for office with those skills evaluated by the public in that way. They don't have the bandwidth to even do something like that. So from a policy perspective, it's, I was, I would just be very surprised if many counties were not really even more upset than we would potentially be about the idea that this process would be, would, would go to, to, you know, offices that aren't necessarily equipped to do it.
So I, so let me make sure I understand, so was WASAC, WASAC is going to testify against?
They have concerns with the bill, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, and that's to me seems like, couldn't we just all get behind WASAC and?
They, the representative wants counties, different counties to, to show up.
Oh, I see, okay.
Because this is, this is a, a bit of a change in what the association of auditors presented. And especially the Thurston County was, we were all good with it and everybody was in alignment with it. So, the fact that it's popping, there's, and I appreciate Commissioner Mahia taking time out of her holiday to get this work up and going because of us being blindsided.
I was meeting with Representative Beaman about something completely different and she brought this up and I was like, well, okay. So I answered the questions and let her know what her concerns were.
So, I, sorry, I'm not sure what's going on with my throat, but it's hard to talk. I attended the legislative update from WASAC on Friday. And I know a number of my teammates were there as well, so please do correct me if I'm wrong or if I missed something. But I was keeping track of all of the bills that they mentioned that they had concerns with and I didn't hear this one on Friday's meeting. Do you, does anyone have any insight as to maybe why that didn't come up or did I miss it?
So, this was all evolving and I know that you had a conversation with Paul afterwards. They had flagged it for us, but they hadn't really dig deep into the bill. They had just said that there were concerns with it. And I spoke with Paul and they spoke with Paul and just based on those conversations and them digging into the different RCWs that correlate between commissioners and auditor's office, both with budget and duties, they have signed in as a concern. So, that has changed since the last update that they gave.
Yes, specifically section one, eight adds a language to reference to the county auditor shall prepare a budget. That changes the dynamic right now of what we currently have. And that's based on a, a viewpoint that the, the current RCWs point that direction. But as our prosecuting attorney says, there's a partnership between the commissioners' budget office and the auditor, what they put together and then where the county budget office takes it and works that and then brings it to the board for their consideration. That language change there changes that dynamic. So, it does remove the ability for the commissioners to prepare the budget. The other aspect in section, section six, and this is the email that was sent out to all of you. It says, the board of county commissioners of the several counties may employ such staff as deemed appropriate to assist with. And that's the key phrase there, to assist with. Because before it says to employ such staff as deemed appropriate with budgetary preparations. And that's in the review from John Toonheim's team. That's, that language minus the assist with gives the county commissioners the ability to prepare their own budget process. To assist with means now that it's, that they're subjected to the auditor taking the lead and then staff are supporting that effort as she deems fit. And so, those are the areas that would, were flagging for the commissioners because it would be a change. And ultimately would change the legal interpretation that John Toonheim's team provided with those two components, which was work that they did, I believe, in early part of twenty twenty-four, maybe twenty twenty-three. I don't remember the date of the memo, but I know that memo's been given to me a number of times.
So we have a motion, I, you know, and I, and I'm in support of the motion. I'd rather see it broad and just oppose fifty-one, fifty-four altogether. Just, I think it. Based on Commissioner, based on your comments that there's questions about the internal auditor piece, there's no, and I'm, I'm taking what you're saying at face value, that there's no burning fire to be put out regarding the clerk of the duties, clerk of the board's duties, then it's cleaner to probably just oppose the bill. So I would, I'd make that a friendly motion.
Second.
So you have a motion to, for the board to oppose fifty-one, fifty-four, is there any further discussion? Call for a vote on that. On favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Two abstentions?
I'm going to abstain from that.
Okay, so we have three, in favor, zero opposed and two abstentions, that motion passes.
And I, I just want to clarify too that, you know, that I hope, you know, that we can figure out how to get this done internally. You know, that would be my hope.
That's what we were working on. And this bill's going to side, basically sideline our ability to do that.
Yeah, yeah, but with WASAC identifying that there are other, other counties with issue and with, you know, the, the, the fact that there are things within, in this that would flag a concern or need to be adjusted, I'm supportive as it stands.
So, so now with that clarity, we can continue to work with Deborah, line up not only staff, but also, I'll send something out as soon as this meeting is done. Commissioners seeing who, who's available to testify. Deborah will, has been working with staff over the last several days. We will come up with the talking points to the implications of that. I know Auditor Hall sent out an email, I think it was on Friday, Thursday or Friday, I don't remember the exact date, with her explanation. So, we appreciate the direction in a fastly evolving situation.
Can I just ask that we all have a chance to review the talking points? And, you know, I, I'm just going to be real, I have real concern with, you know, I think that it's fine that we oppose it, but I don't know that we need to, you know, go and, you know, I, I just feel like there's. it looks like we're, we're at odds if, you know, we're going and opposing our, our auditor. And I just don't love that public view of, you know, we're, you know.
We didn't put ourselves there.
Right, but we don't have to nail it in either. So, you know, and I just feel like out of respect, you know, we could have talking points, you know, out of respect for the work that, you know, our, our auditor, who is part of our team, has done on this work that we would consider, you know, just, just opposing, you know, and maybe, you know, and if we really feel like you need to testify, then we can, but, you know, I just.
But Commissioner, with all due respect, we're being asked to testify because this has come up. And so if we don't provide clarity, Deborah's pressing for clarity. It's, we would, we're prefer to say, hey, we just want to oppose, but no, we need to understand why. Because something was baked without our knowledge, sold as a, everyone's on board with this. And now through Commissioner Mejia, through WASAC saying, hey, were you aware of this? At the same time, one of my budget staff who just happened to work for the state said, hey, I still keep my hand in that and this popped up and we're like, whoa, we're not aware of this. And then all our commissioners are scrambling. So there is a little bit of explaining we have to do as to why we are opposed to it.
That's fine. And just I'm asking if we can be sure that we all have a chance to review.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to say to that, that, you know, if it was an auditor related issue, like I would def, your, the approach that you're talking about would be appropriate to me, but this directly, like this is not just an auditor issue, despite what the auditor told us at that meeting. This directly impacts our business in a way that, I mean, there is nothing that we have more, greater responsibility for than the county budget. And something that directly basically puts handcuffs on us to do the job that we're responsible, the people to do, there could be no greater import, issue of direct importance to the Board of County Commissioners. Right or wrong, I'm just saying the subject matter involved necessitates that we may have to oppose the bill in a very direct way. I, I don't, we don't need to highlight the, you know, internal debate we've had with the, with the county auditor. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to.
It's the Auditors Association that, that proposed this and that's, that's where our, I would think our conversation would be.
Yeah, but this is important that we, I mean, if we, we, we have to take the position that we, that we think is right on something that touches our, our direct responsibilities so directly.
Absolutely.
So with that direction, I will engage Deborah to have Thurston County sign in and oppose.
Yes.
And we'll work on talking points for the board to see.
Yes, and staff, we'll work with staff to be available for any of the commissioners that are going to attend and by testimony.
Okay, we've gone, Commissioner Cos, you have some on this topic?
I can ask after the meeting.
So we have, so I don't know what people's times are, but we, we have, I know additional items to address. So hopefully everybody can continue to work through.
Last item.
County manager had one more.
Yeah, we are working with Judge Thomas and Joe Avalos from Thurston East Behavioral Health on, with Senator Bateman on potential request for funding to support the capital needs to their increasing of the behavioral health beds. Commissioner Grant mentioned that in hindsight, which I agree a hundred percent, that it would have been good for us to be tracking when this thing was going forward, to have our needs baked into the process. Because it's always easier to do it that way. But here we find ourselves with the state increasing the beds and there not being the available funding to get the work done, but also room in which to perform the work, which would be a new courtroom. And so the, the Senator is been gracious to give us time to have this conversation. We're going to be working to try to get a high level overview of what we think it would cost us, but it's a variable. You know, we, we, our staff are being conservative because they don't want to give a number that then is not fully evaluated, that then doesn't meet the needs. So we're going to work at a high level overview of what we think those capital costs are. So is that Josh, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think Judge Thomas has been good on this in terms of the cost of the expanded courtroom areas, but all of the other follow-on aspects of the system still are going to be stretched taking on these beds. I think he made that point very clear. It's good.
And I want to be clear that, that, you know, Joe Avalos reached out to me that we have, there has been funding allocated from healthcare authority for the court costs. So there is much, there's operational costs already allocated for this increase in, in caseload. But there, but what this is specific to is, is the space and the actual, I'd say bricks and mortar and its capital. It means bricks and mortar to actually how, to have a courtroom where we can do this. The other thing I, I just want to mention too is that just when, when given estimate for the courtroom, just know that you don't have to spend too much time on that because if you just put something forward, it's not going to be that exact amount that goes through because that will then on the back end get sent to someone else on, on the staff's end and then they'll come back with, there'll be time to adjust. So when you just make a budget estimate, just to say, can you put a, a line item in to the capital budget? It's tentative. Everyone works that way and, and people will come back with, you know, what the real dollars would be down the road. So, yeah.
I think you come at sure grant for your and both of them. I thought that's awesome.
And, and I think on the operational costs, it would be probably good for us to round up because I'm not sure we were hearing from the court side that their costs were going to be covered. So actually on the call, unfortunately Judge Thomas wasn't able to make the call with Senator Bateman. But that was the first time I heard that costs were going to be covered because Camille's write-up, her one pager that she really didn't get, have time to get to, talks about there's an operational and a capital impact.
I'll review it.
Isn't the contract for per case, like we had to do a calculation per case and it's per case. So I mean, assuming there's a hundred more cases, we'll get paid. I mean, that rate is not, Robin, you know, could explain how the, the rate's not exactly perfectly optimal for us. But, but to the extent that it's a grounded and calculated rate, we'll get that rate for the additional cases. It's the, it's capital expenditures that may bite us.
I can look really quickly.
In a new way.
I actually stayed on with Joe and the tariff from the, and we discussed it. It was previous to my job to set that rate, you know, so I'm really familiar with the ins and outs of how this is, this, these kinds of things are funded. But they, what Joe wanted to emphasize, because he was like, hey, hey, just want to let you know that, because he doesn't want us to ask for dollars because he's already negotiated those dollars. And he kind of made a point to make sure I said that because he, so I need to go look at that in their budget and see what was negotiated at one point in time. Because he would have known this along the way, the caseload is increasing and the dollars increase with the caseload. And so he didn't want me to, he was like, don't go asking for treatment dollars. That's pretty much what he said. And so we'll verify that and then, but the capital dollars need to be, it's just a capital request that we should be asking for.
This is related to maple lean?
Yes.
Where they're going to be.
This is, and I have a, yes, I have a meeting just actually right now with, to discuss that with someone too.
Can there be, just so everyone is shooting in the same direction, can there be a meeting with Joe, yourself and staff, right? And that, and Superior Court as well? That way, the requests are clear of, of either, if the BHASO is, is coordinating with the operational dollars, that's great. But I think that needs to get around to, to awesome, to like, you know, Superior Court. That way they're not pushing for that piece and they can just, you know, if our focus is going to be just on the capital, like just.
We have that meeting on the calendar, right? That's what we're having with Judge Thomas. We're all coming back again to the table, so.
Yeah, but that's with Senator Bateman.
Oh, yeah, have a pre-meet.
Oh, so we just put a pre-meeting?
I'm not sure if it's on.
Definitely do that. I think it'd be a really good idea also for Joe to be able to explain to you how those dollars are allocated.
So maybe would the board like to hear the four main problems, not just the capital?
Yeah, I think that everyone needs to be brought to speed on this.
So these are from the maple lane. This is Judge Indu Thomas and Camille Golding and Joe Avalos. So the four issues are with this new influx, there's not, there's not an available judicial officer, calendar time to respond to this anticipated increase. There's not available courtroom space, that's the capital request, to add calendar time to respond to this. And three, sudden influx of cases when facility opens creates a burden on the court and other facilities. Then four, increase in jury trials will require a judge and a courtroom, which then delays other court proceedings. So the capital request and the operational request are a piece of it, but it's not the whole puzzle. So that's the conversation that we're working to have this afternoon to ensure that we've.
If I can, that's separate from what Joe is going to get.
That's right.
So there's an operational component for, for the courts that if Joe's getting money, we have to figure out how, because Judge Thomas is the one that flagged those four concerns.
Yeah, but yep, yep. And I, we should just have a meeting with Joe to talk about it so he can explain to you how he, how that money works.
But those haven't been addressed and unfortunately Judge Thomas wasn't able to make the meeting with, with Senator Bateman. So I think it'd be good for all of us to round up.
Yeah, let's do that.
So who's all in the room having this conversation? It sounds like there's multiple conversations going on in multiple places.
That's why I'm asking for everyone to have an internal meeting.
The case though, it sounds like there's multiple people having multiple separate conversations.
Well, some of it's not anyone's fault because we scheduled with Senator Bateman, but we're unable to have the meeting. So when we were able to have the meeting, Judge Thomas wasn't able to be there.
Last minute.
So last minute because calendars. So we just have to make sure everyone's on the same page. Because what Senator Bateman's doing for us is she's wanting to champion a, let's get a fix, but she has to get all the information from us. And what I don't want to do is provide one number and then she's, she goes and gets us that and then we still say, oh, operationally, the courts still have an issue. Or that that operational issue is going to come back to the county for general fund dollars to support. We don't have the money to do that. So we're just trying to make sure that we're all understanding, if we're going to ask her to help us fix something, that we can be comprehensive in what that fix is. We can guarantee if she gets that for us, that it is a fix and we can move forward and not a, well, thank you for that, but now we need X, Y and Z because that'll be frustrating.
Okay, and who owns this discussion right now? Like where is this? Does this rest in the county, assistant county manager, county manager, commissioners, Judge Thomas? Like is there a, who is in, who is, who's got the reins on this? Because it sound, I'm, I'm confused.
I would say it would be Camille, that it would be our.
Who's Camille?
Superior Court, a court.
So, so who has the reins? So we're working with Judge Thomas and the county manager's office to move forward. I believe that Commissioner Grant was invited because she has specific expertise by maybe, was it Joe? I forgot who in the invitation.
Somebody in the auditor's office?
Judge Thomas.
Okay. Judge Thomas invited and Commissioner Grant provided some great expert perspective.
Joe, you said Joe Avalos and that's.
Joe Avalos is Thurston County, is the Thurston, oh, yeah, yeah, is the behavioral health organization and the person that's in charge of all of it. Yeah.
Said my head's spinning. There's a lot going on right now.
So the next steps on this are county manager's office with Judge Thomas. We will have a meeting, bring Thurston County, Thurston Mason Behavioral Health, bring them to the table because they all have a piece of that. So that our request to Senator Bateman is comprehensive. We understand that when we're asking her to do something, that if she gets it for us, because she seems like she's really motivated to help us, we actually can deliver. And that's where Judge Thomas has to weigh in to make sure the other three components of her items that she flagged. And the brevity of the conversation we had last time, I don't think we were able to get to all those components.
Well, yeah, thank you again, Commissioner Grant for, for jumping in. I guess one of the things I will request is once all of that is figured out on how much the request actually is, if that can be shared with the board of like, this is how much the board is requesting or, or operational for capital dollars, or we're not requesting operational, we're just requesting, just so that way.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we could do a ledge update.
We're all up on the hill. We can, and we're asked about that. We, we know.
And that probably brings me back to the first question, the very beginning of this conversation, which was, what kind of process do we take when we have, are doing things like this? Because I want to make sure that everyone, you know, everyone knows that when we're making steps forward. And I just want to end it with this, that I was asked to attend by Brad Banks and Paul Jewell, a meeting tomorrow regarding true blood legislation, to, to consult with them before they meet with one of the representatives on it. So I just want to flag you guys that that, that I agreed to do that. I'm going to do it virtually. But just bringing again, perspective from my previous roles into that.
Just real quick on the ITA, I mean, this is not, this is a new wrinkle to an old issue. This has been going since the day I got on the board where we weren't getting adequate resource. There was the recovery, there was the South Sound, when the South Sound Behavioral Health facility opened, we had painstaking detailed negotiations between the Superior Court on the needs. They weren't happy with the setup of the courtroom that was being provided there. There was like literally judges meeting with architects at their.
And I was on the other side of that. So I was like actually the state, the person working on the backend to fund that. So that's why I'm very familiar.
Yeah, we continue to go and we haven't gotten any traction. And so like it's a real opportunity because Senator Bateman, this is an area that's very close to her heart. And we haven't necessarily had that energy to get this solved in a way that maybe, you know, maybe there'll be an opportunity. And if not this year, then in the coming years with her expertise on that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We appreciate her leadership on this.
I just, oh, did you raise your hand first?
Well, I've been waiting for my commissioner item.
We're still on this topic, the last comment.
I just, and Commissioner Minster and I started to talk about this, just ways that we can improve process. And one thing that I, I want to try to bring to the table or have us talking about is just action item tracking, doing a better job of that. And then who owns certain aspects of different processes? Or like who owns items? There's a lot of stuff being talked about with, you know, as far as our legislative agenda and policy. And, you know, it's kind of, I don't know if it was official, prior to Rob leaving, you know, he was kind of the go-to person for that, not to say that he was our legislative director, but I, I think he kind of filled that role. Right now it's unclear who, you know, I would say that that ultimately rests in the county manager's office and unless designated otherwise, but, you know, we can't add job duties. But I, I would, I would like it to be clear that we know exactly who we as commissioners and who this organization looks to for legislative direction or a quasi legislative director. And, you know, I, I imagine unless it's designated otherwise, that would be the county manager. But is that, it's clear that there's work there and there's a, there's a vacuum that's been created that is going to get filled and let, and we want to fill it how we want to fill it, not.
Right, no, you're, you're right. Rob was the person that we had identified for state legislative items. And he was working closely with Deborah, sending out updates, helped to coordinate with Linda, who did a fantastic job on the legislative breakfast, helped to put those things together, wrote the, worked with departments to put together our priorities, then was submitted. And his stepping away, we have a bit of a vacuum. It will be me until we can fill that. I'll work with Josh and Deborah. We're also working to engage with Deborah. Rob has already started this process in a more meaningful way. I think that in the absence of the county manager for a period of time, like Ty said, you probably didn't do your normal process. And so there's a lot of things that we will be building and setting up. So appreciate the perspectives, keep them coming. As we hire back on staff, we'll build capacity to get more and more work done.
Because I, I can say that like when it previously was the county manager, Romero, and it was something that like, I didn't see how he did it, you know what I mean? Like it was one of those things where it's like, I wish he, he was doing it, but it didn't, I was like, I don't see how he can possibly manage this. And I always felt like we needed, yeah, I always felt like it was an imperfect process and it needed someone like Rob or, or, or a person, you know. So I don't really want to go back to putting it on the board, back of the county manager because I don't think it's the best use of his.
But that's not.
But it needs to get done.
Necessarily Jennifer Walker's new duties either.
Right, and we, how do we know who, and that's a question I have is like, what, when, well, at some point we know what those duties will be for each of the, I know you gave us departments of who the new assistant directors will be, but other duties as assigned, you know, it'd be nice to know. I mean, I, I will tell you that in ledge session, you know, a point, I would say a point three FTE or a full-time employee, you know, at least somebody should have that as their duty to track during ledge session. This is going to be a long session and it impacts our, our work on a daily basis. It's really important and to me it's a priority. It's, it's the best way for us to leverage funding and the best way for us to be able to, you know, to get stuff done next year. And so I, I feel like I'm, I'm going to, I was going to start assigning my own staff to start bill tracking just simply because I'm like, how do we keep up on it? So I just want you guys to know that's, you know, kind of where I come from. I have never had a session in 10 years where I have not been tracking bills myself. And it's just, you know, 50 a day sometimes is just watching them move. It's really important to do it. And it doesn't take that much time if you know how to use the system, so.
I, I would, I would say, and I would, you know, I would look to the county manager to build that. But with the, some of the program manager vacancies, I think there's.
to build that, but with the, some of the program manager vacancies, I think there's opportunity to discuss what, you know, those positions mean to the county and how, you know, are we, how, you know, how we employ those individuals as analysts and, and adminis, as executive staff, that maybe there's opportunity there.
I think we have a lot of opportunity, hearing that it used to be done by the county manager, and you're not in favor of putting that on the county manager, I would agree. There is a role, Rob was a natural fit because he swam in that stream, it was like second nature for him, and he had a lot of, Rob was a process guy that everything he did, he did with the utmost. So, him stepping away, I don't see it being Josh or Jennifer, and so we are taking a moment to figure out what are our next steps in that area. But we're doing that with a number of positions, and it's an opportunity for us to look at capacity. I think these are great conversations to have in our planning session, so we can talk through org and, or, or structure alignments and these things.
Commissioner Mihia, you have another item.
I have two items.
I have one, I have three and I'm willing to drop it to one, but just be aware in terms of timing.
I'm punting all mine to this afternoon.
So go ahead.
Um, just, I guess in the legislative tone, they are asking for cosponsorships for the county Public Defense Bill, and so, WASCAC is asking for us to contact our senators so they can co-sponsor. Right now it is being led by Senator Trudeau and Senator Lovick. So I was hoping to get direction from the board to ask our senators from Thurston County to sign up for co-sponsoring the Public Defense Bill.
I'm in support of that.
Me too. So.
So we got five thumbs up.
Now we're doing thumbs again.
Okay, so, okay, thank you for that, so we'll go ahead and work on sending this out, and I'll work with Leonard and Josh on this.
Thank you.
Second item, New Horizons. I saw that an email came from the county manager. I have been contacted and I, and there is a meeting with the city of Lacey that's also been set up that I've been invited to, and so, kinda wanting to know like, what are the next steps and what is the board wanting to do? Because we have someone who is interested and it's a well-known local organization who works with clean housing. They are willing to make this higher density based on the request from the city of Lacey, and so I'm, I'm just kind of at this point where I, I'm looking for, from direction from the board on what we're going to do. Because if we're going to proceed another direction, I think we just need to let New Horizons know. That way they don't keep doing the work and contacting people and, and trying to get this. If we are going to go into that direction, I also think it's, it's good to let them know as well so they can actually start working on the financial plan. So, I'm just looking for some sense on where the board is at so we can give direction to staff, because this has been a long time.
So I also talked to Representative D'Leo yesterday, and my only hesitation was to make sure that we were working in partnership with Lacey on what their vision was, and my understanding was they wanted a higher density project, and my understanding is they worked with New Horizons and they're pivoting to that model and they're satisfied. I talked with Andy Ryder, the mayor, last week about this, so I'm all in, myself. I, my concerns have been met, sounds like an awesome project and a good use of our, of our property. I know we had the, that thing about the, we, it was acquired by Public Works or what the, you know, I, I question kind of that because that law, we just went through a set of statutes where there's a provision in the law that says a public group can, can dispose of a property at less than market value for certain purposes, affordable housing being one of those purposes. It law, we just did it where we, we basically sold it, not for a dollar, but we sold it, in that case, we sold it for what we paid, which was less than market value. The difference being, like who owns it? Because if it's owned by a utility and it's like part of a proprietary fund, you can't necessarily, like if it's owned, if it's owned by like the water department, then it has to benefit the water department. And so like that was why I was asking the question, do the road funds have to be paid back if a road fund's owned it? And the email that I had read, it said, yes, this is valued at $1.63 million and the road fund has to be paid back $1.63 million.
Not if we lease it.
Yeah, commissioners, this item is on schedule, I think to come, is it next week? Yeah, and there's an aspect to this conversation that we're recommending happen in executive sessions since it's the disposition of land, and so my recommendation is, I'm on track with Commissioner Mihia, we need direction from the board on this, so we'll bring it next week and have that conversation. An aspect of it will be executive session with the attorney here to answer some of those questions. But staff did a good job, took us a little bit longer than we anticipated to round up all those questions because some of it had to be researched and all documentation, but they were able to get that information.
Quick question on my end, I guess I'm wondering, when we see, can I get briefed? Or is there, can I, I don't understand the process with this, so it's kind of like, okay, this has come before me, so then, do I reach out to you guys and just ask for a brief on it? I mean, you did a really good job writing it up. Or, do I just reach out to one commissioner to see if someone can give me the background on it? Like I don't, someone tell me what to do, you know, how with this, cause I wanted to know more.
I'm happy to meet with you and give you the background on the, there's been a history with that property.
Right, yeah, exactly, there's a whole backstory and I just wanna make sure I get it.
Commissioner Grant, I'd recommend both. I recommend you, you pick one of your peers that you get to speak to.
You can't go to all of your peers.
I know, I know, that's what, that's the thing, is you just go to one, right?
But that is, that's not true. But, but in, but in the information that you read, if you ever have questions, then absolutely, well, most of our briefings say, if you want individual information, we're happy to sit and answer any questions, you can always schedule a briefing, so we can give you the.
For now I won't, but, but I'll, I'll reach out to my, my colleagues here, so, okay, cool.
Okay, so we can, when we're contacted, we can say that following an executive session that we're having next week, we'll, we'll chart a direction forward.
Yep.
Cause I've been getting asked multiple times, that's Commissioner Mihia says she has as well. I've got a new wrinkle. There, there, there is an added element that I wanna make sure we make space for, coming from our CPED director, looking at some adjacent properties and wanting to have a grander, or well, a desire to look at a bigger vision for something, cause some of the adjacent properties might represent other opportunities for the county in that area, and so, making space for, for that conversation I think would be good too.
Is that in the comprehensive, like in the plan, in the comprehensive plan that we?
That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Yeah, okay, I don't know, yeah. That, that brings me to my last little question for me, is, is there a way for us to get an advanced agenda? Like what items am I gonna be looking at next week, and then the next week after that, and the next week after that?
Yeah, and that'll take time.
So that I could be working on the process or like working on the things, cause I've gotta catch up, and I, like others, you know, I don't.
So like each of these, we'll cover them like three times. We'll go, we'll go over our agenda over like two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
And, and so it's a revolving thing, but like this, we had a meeting about this agenda already, twice already, and over time, you're gonna, you're gonna catch up on the history.
Right, right, okay. I guess just right now is what I was thinking, like next week and the week after, to know what I should be working on, so that I'm not, I can catch up on things, I guess.
I know, we have session Friday, I think, to go over some historic, I just wanted to give you some background.
Okay, yeah, we'll meet on Friday.
A few things. Real quick, I, at the risk, covered one of mine, so I'm only, I'm only down two, but I'll just confine myself to one, at the risk of making everybody's head spin again, I just wanted to report.
It was just mine.
Quickly, on the meeting we had with the DNR on the NCS provisor, this is the money that was allocated last session that said that Thurston County can get up to 260 acres provided the Climate Commitment Act's not repealed, it was not repealed, so we're working with DNR to get the, up to 260 acres. We sent a letter in in December, kinda laying out our top priority parcels for that, they have responded and said, our top priority parcel on that list is appropriate in their view, it's the Radagast piece, which is right in the center piece of Capital State Forest in your fuzzy top, and they were basically saying, you know why you want that parcel, it's a great parcel, et cetera. They just wanted to, so there's, so we can move forward on that. They, though, wanted to throw out the idea, and that's why I'm bringing this to the board, in another communication earlier where we, there's this trust 42, trust repayment thing that goes on up in Capital State Forest, and when we were putting, saying, if you're, in a previous ask, we said, if you're not gonna give us any of our parcels that are trust 42 connected, here would be our list, and one of those, the top of that list was Starwagon, which is land that's east of Summit Lake, another good Legacy Forest parcel, but they were basically saying, hey, would you have any interest in shifting your priority from Radagast to Starwagon? It would be simpler for all of us in a couple of ways that they described. One was that, so, two layers of simplicity. One is that whereas Radagast, county beneficiaries get money, we would, to transfer those to these new younger forests down in Waukegan County, which is what this provisor does, we'd have to have an interlocal agreement with them so that the money comes back to the right place. Okay, no big, whereas Starwagon is a common school trust, no, no county recipient, so we, we wouldn't have to mess with that ILA. No future treasurer would have to distribute money back to Thurston County beneficiaries cause the money would go off from Waukegan County to the common school trust. Second is, Radagast, the parcel we most wanted, is part of this trust 42, trust repayment, whereas Starwagon is not. So from DNR's perspective, that's a little simpler, you know, they're, they're not saying they wouldn't do it or BNR wouldn't do it, but they just wanted to ask us if, you know, we were really set on Radagast. So, I'm, that's it, that's the background. My personal position is that we stick with Radagast for, one, because I think it's the parcel we most wanted and most connects to a, to a larger set of parcels in the middle of Capital State Forest. Secondly, it really, if this were the only time this was ever gonna be done, then it might make sense to go with Starwagon, but because, you know, the new, there's gonna continue to, the new lands, commissioner has paused sales, there's gonna be continued resources to try to do replacement lands for Legacy Forest, we're gonna have to do all these things eventually anyway, so we, you know, there's not, it's not like this is never gonna have to be broached, these obstacles. So my opinion is, let's just, let's just get the mechanisms in place now and get the parcel we want. So, my personal position is that we just say thank you for the suggestion, but we'd like to stick with Radagast as Thurston County's primary parcel. We understand what you're saying about Starwagon, but, you know, thanks but no thanks, sort of, but.
Ashley's work, Commissioner Mr. Ashley's working to summarize the conversation in your letter.
Okay, perfect.
And send that all out to you, so.
Okay, good.
For those of you that want more information, we'll bring it to the board quickly.
I'm not trying to rush anyone, I mean, we can just, I'm just planting the seed now, we don't have a deadline to make this. I just wanted to give that background and that update on that meeting, so you guys could ask me questions if you have follow-up, and we can talk about it as a board at a later point.
Yeah, probably like two weeks, hopefully.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Klaus.
Hopefully this is a quick one. The county manager sent out a proposed process for hiring my new executive assistant that the HR director worked hard on and I really appreciate. I think the process looks great. I was hoping that the board could either give direction to staff to go ahead and post that position, following, following that, that process, or if not, then I'd like to know what the board is looking for, to feel comfortable giving that direction to staff.
Commissioners, I think we have this on, as part of the, so tomorrow's agenda, correct me if I'm wrong clerk, we're gonna be talking about the questions you had about the RIS Fund. I don't mean to interrupt Commissioner Klaus, I just wanted to provide this perspective. We're gonna be talking about the RIS Fund because some of you had questions about that last time the aide came up, and in my mind, that was part of that discussion.
Yeah, so can we take that up for tomorrow then, Commissioner Klaus?
Um, yeah, I, I'm okay with that.
I know two commissioners had, wanted to send some information about that RIS Fund issue before we kind of dove into the question that you were asking.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So, I think we'll just logically take that up tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Anything else?
No worries, that's okay.
11:45, we're driven.